Let's go right to the, let's start off with our agenda real quick. We have the minutes of three of March 8th, 2021. Anybody have any corrections, deletions, additions or subtractions? Anybody have a chance to read it over?
Bert, you had asked me a question earlier and I checked with the AG's office.
Oh, yes.
The transcript of the chat is a document. It's not the minutes. It's a separate document that would be attached to the minutes. So the various comments that are made in the chat function don't have to be included in the actual minutes, but the chat, the actual transcript should be in a sense of not in the minutes, but just as you're dealing with letters and plans and anything else you're referring to in the minutes, the chat function would be sort of a side dish to the entree of the minutes. So is that, is that helpful?
Yes. So Charlie, then the part, our last page of our minutes then, including some of the Zoom chat, we should have Alana make a supplement to the minutes, is that?
That would work, yes.
Alana, did you get all that?
The minutes themselves.
Yes, exactly. Okay, so gentlemen, in approving the, approving or any changes to the minutes, do not include the, pretty much the last page where it says it's entitled Zoom chat, but the previous one, two, three pages would be the official minutes of the zoning board of appeals meeting for Monday, March 8th, just for clarity. Anybody find any changes or corrections or anything like that?
Nope, everyone's good.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the Monday, March 8th.
Someone like?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of Monday, March 8th.
And do I have a second? They have a motion in a second to accept the minutes of the Halifax zoning board of appeals for Monday, March 8th, 2021. I'll ask for a voice vote and those in favor say aye. Kasaya?
Yeah.
Bob?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Myself, yes. Dan, you all good with them too?
They're good, yeah.
Okay, great. Passes five to zero to zero. Okay. All right, Alana, what do we have for bills here? We have PH Express petition 933, 34, not 35, 36, 937. What else do we have? Armory Engineers for petition 920, the Country Club Estates with an invoice number for engineering services and office supplies for 6236, invoice number 21888199. Is that, is that correct, Alana?
That's everything.
Okay. Anybody have any questions regarding the payment of these bills? Okay, then I'll accept the motion to pay the bills as listed. Could I have a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the bills as presented.
In a second?
Second.
They have a motion in a second to accept for payment of the bills listed on our agenda. Those in favor say aye. Kasaya?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
And myself, aye. How about you, Dan?
Yes.
Awesome, passes 500. Okay, let's move. Here we go, there we are here. Alana, what do you want me to do? Have the signees and leave them at the office for you?
That would be great.
All right, no extra charge for that, Alana.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, let's see, and then it's 9:05, after 9:05. Let's move on to the first order of business and that would be petition number 933. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 12th, 2021 at 7:05 PM via Zoom on the application by JSC LLC for a special permit in variance to build a garage building for parking to be located at 311 slash 313 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. 02338. Property is owned by JSC LLC of 311 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. 02338, as shown on Assessors Map 63 lot 63-19-0. Title reference book 39948, page 48. The applicant is seeking a special permit to construct a garage building for parking located in the business district in accordance with the town of Halifax zoning bylaws, Table of Use Regulation, Section 167.7C, which would constitute a continuation of a non-conforming use and an extension of a non-conforming use, 167.8A and 8C. The applicant is also requesting variances from the left side setback from 30 feet to 10 and a half feet and the rear setback from 40 feet to 10.5 feet in accordance with the town of Halifax zoning bylaws, Section 167.11, area or zone business petition number 933. Okay, who's going to be speaking to us? Mr. Casa Grande?
Yes, that's correct.
Did I pronounce that correctly?
That's correct, yes, yes.
Okay. Why don't you tell us, Mr. Casa Grande, what you want to do here with the property?
Sure, well, I think at issue really are three things as you have hit on at the public hearing notice. The first thing is our commercial lot here that we've owned since the 60s is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The lot pre-exists with only 100 feet of frontage and is slightly less than 40,000 square feet at 38,890 square feet. It's interestingly enough, the only non-conforming business lot in the town of Halifax along Route 106 or up Route 58. I thought perhaps it would be some other lots in there, but we, we seem to be the only one non-conforming on frontage. So at 100 feet, it's a, it's a fairly narrow lot. That 100 feet also extends back. It is a rectangular lot. It doesn't gain any width as it goes back. So the, first, any, any construction we want to do on this property comes before your board, regardless, because of the non-conforming nature of the lot.
When was the existing built or lot coming to existence, Scott?
I understand it's sometime before 1960.
Oh, okay.
My, the first prop building we built or my uncle built on this property was in 1968. So that goes back obviously a ways. And it was interesting to note though, in going up and down the street on the GIS maps, the only one without 150 feet of frontage, so, which is a bit of a challenge for this lot to do anything. Our existing buildings are built within setbacks obviously as well and exist under variance. So that said, the, you know, that's kind of the overarching, always a problem with this lot, no matter what we do scenario. The next item is the use I'd like to do for a, the additional building I'd like to build on the property would be under your use table, 167.20, page 23, 167.7. Commercial parking lots or parking garages, which is allowable by special permit in the business district. And again, this lot is obviously in the business district. That seems to be the use that has been indicated to me. This is, would be put up as a private parking garage. It will be for the parking of antique classic cars and collector vehicles. So that seems to be the use within the business districts that fit. There aren't really, there's no residential use of the property as it is now. So this wouldn't be something that would be considered a secondary structure to a residential property, that form of a garage or anything. Because there is no residence, there are no apartments and there are no residences here at the property. So that's kind of the, the secondary item is that special permit use is obviously a requirement to come before your board. The next item is the variance request that I have. The side setbacks and rear setbacks, obviously, as you know, set out by the town are 30-foot side setbacks and 40-foot rear setbacks on property lines. There's no distinction within the town of Halifax for the business district versus the commercial district, which every town has the right to do the things the way they, they want to do them. It is a little bit unusual. You do see different setbacks usually in different areas and different towns, but some go as low as zero. The town I live in has a zero setback in business district, which is probably going too far the other way. But either way, those setbacks due to the non-conforming nature of my lot make doing most anything rather difficult. This type of structure that I'm looking to, to put up here on the lot would be 50 foot wide by 8 feet, which is 4,000 square feet. With regard to lot coverage, the town allows a 25% maximum lot coverage, as you know. With this building, with my pre-existing buildings on the property and this building added, I would only be at 20.4%. So we'd still be under your lot coverage restriction. Wouldn't be looking for any, anything from you guys there. The building as, as I, as is necessary for me and or my use is predominantly something I would, I would prefer to keep in a location such as I have it located. And I think you guys have copies of the plans, correct?
Yes.
Where I have it located in the far back left corner of our narrow lot, in that this isn't necessarily something that I prefer to have front and center with a big sign on the front of it as far as, you know, what's going on. It's not, it's not really a building that is going to have any public traffic to it at all. It is going to be, as I have laid out, a parking garage again for classic antique cars, the 99% majority of which will be my own. And separately, my father is also a partner on the property. He's likely to keep a car or two in it. And that's ideally what it's set up for. So keeping it back there, it's not something that, we've gone through the, through the playing board regarding parking. Everything, you know, can fit obviously with the need for the variance. As far as the size of the building, again, 4,000 square feet, the, the width is necessary to be able to maneuver within the building for the, for the parking of the vehicles. And the length is just necessary for how many I plan to have that would be in there. And again, with, you know, a 40-foot rear setback scenario, it would almost, you know, eliminate that part of being able to build the building there. With regard to my request for the variances, if you're, if you're able to look at this on an ortho or even on the locust plan that we have there, or I did provide you, even though I know it's, I'm sorry, guys, it's, it's pretty bad, but it's a, within my packet, I provided the Oliver GIS map overhead. It's just a copy of a black and white, so it's a little rough. But you can see if in the northwest corner of the lot, which is where I'd like to place the building, my direct abutters are the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot and at the rear, the Walmart parking lot slash retention area. So intruding into the setback areas in this part of the property, again, it's commercial, not residential. It's not like I'm backing up to a residential property, you know, you'd want to give more space to. Placing it inside of the setbacks in this area doesn't really put any restrictions on my abutters with regard to their structures. You know, both of those properties, as we know, are, are built out and their access driveway at Stop &amp; Shop is the closest thing that would come anywhere near me, which is pretty far away actually in number of feet. And the area where the retention pond of the parking lot is for Walmart to the other back corner of it. So this would be positioning it in the, in the least intrusive of anything developable around our property. I'd be maintaining the distance from the vacant lot to my east with more than 40 feet from that property and that's undeveloped. So I have no idea what's going to go on there, how close to where they're going to need to do things. So it seemed to make the most sense to position myself as far away from that side because there could be future development over on that property, obviously. So that's kind of basically what I, what I have is that really realistically, you know, going back, it's, there's the three things, the fact that the lot's a pre-existing non-conforming lot in a couple of matters, especially the frontage. It's a long, narrow lot. The use, which is a special permit allowable within the bylaw. And then the bigger item is, is the variance for the placing of the building.
Okay, well, what I'm going to do first is opening up to questions from members of the board and then open up to members of the public. Again, Mr. Seelig, if you would, you know, let me know if there was somebody from the, from the public that would like to address the board after, after we get through with the, with the members and we'll take it from there. Gentlemen, Kasaya, Bob, Pete, Jerry or Dan, do you have questions of Mr. Casa Grande?
Is you gonna have heat in there and water?
Yeah, it is plumbed. We, our plans were to have water, there'd be a half bath in a, in a sink to be able to wash up and it will be heated because of the nature of the vehicles.
Are you going to be doing any repairs in the place?
No, no, there's no plan for any repair. I actually have full repair capabilities at my home. And so that's where any work on the cars would happen. This is strictly for, the greatest repair might be wiping them down. That would be it. There's no plan for work lifts or anything of the sort.
Is it also going to remain private? It's not going to be commercial? You're not going to have exhibits down there or anything?
No, there wouldn't be exhibits. I mean, it's commercial by nature of, it's owned commercially by the LLC and it's on a business lot, but it won't be open to the public and or commercial, be private from that standpoint.
So, so no outside vehicles will be coming in to be worked on or, or anything like that? Or, or you're not leasing out or renting out space inside the building for vehicles other than your own or your father's?
Well, there was thought to some of that over the winter months, i.e. the center aisle. I have some friends who have some vehicles that would like to put them somewhere in the winter. Honestly, I don't know that that's ever going to become anything. And if, if I did, that would likely be they take me to dinner for it. That would be about it. It wouldn't be a business that I'd be renting out spaces.
All right. Gentlemen, Pete or Bob, you have any questions?
Yeah, so, so the, the setback or the rear or the side setback, is the, is the building going to increase or I'm sorry, decrease the side lot line or the rear lot line from where it currently is?
The lot lines themselves stay exactly, exactly where they are currently.
No, not the lot lines, but the building, the setback.
Yeah, from the existing building is, is the, the side lot line, it's obviously not the rear lot line. I don't think this, is it going to increase or I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. So the existing buildings?
Right.
Yeah, the closest the existing building comes is 15 feet currently. But both of those buildings, if, if, if you know the location and all this, two buildings, it's Warwick Insurance in the front and then it was Oppenheim, the attorney behind me, which is now currently a building we're trying to rent. Both of those buildings, one's at 16 feet and one's at 15 feet. And however, both of those buildings are more in what I would call the developable envelope of our neighboring properties versus when we get to this back left corner, as I said, you know, yes, I'm asking you to get closer than my other structures are there, but at the, at the points I'm asking to be closer, the, the building development of those other properties are built out Walmart and Stop &amp; Shop and they don't have structures anywhere near that area. So that, that's kind of why we thought, you know, this positioning would be not necessarily offensive to the neighbors. I did provide in the, in my packet, a, a letter from the Rosen Realty Property, who was supportive. I did also speak to Stop &amp; Shop and Stop &amp; Shop has a connection with the vacant property to my east as well. They expressed that they had no concerns with the property. They don't write letters for people, the same as Walmart. But they both expressed that they didn't have objections to what I was asking for, which are the encroachments in the setbacks towards their properties.
So the, the only two things I think that are, are sticking points are the, the increase in the non-conformity, if we were looking at that, so from 15 down to 10 feet. And then the 167.12, which is about garages, has that limit on a ground floor area, no leap, no greater than 884 square feet. And I think we're looking at 4,000 square feet.
Yeah, that's a residential, I believe.
Yeah. So I mean, that, there's, there's definitely an argument there. There, there's, is there something in there that says it's specifically residential? Or specifically, since we're looking at garages, I don't, I want to just be sure that we're, because if you look at, I don't know if anybody else is looking at it. If you look at like Section 6 there, it says no residential garage or barn, but then when you look at all the rest, it says no garage or barn. So, and, and we've, I know in the past, we've stuck to that 884 and I know we've increased it with special permits before. So it might be, you know, something we can look at because that's part of the, the section there too. But I just wanted to point that out, that that's a pretty significant increase. I just wanted to point it out before. Those are the only two things I see with it. It seems pretty reasonable in the commercial district, it seems.
Pete, what, what was it allowed by under the bylaw? I'm sorry.
So, so the two things I see are just the increase in the non-conformity, which, which is a sticking point. And then the 167.12 F, F4, which is that no garage or barn shall have a ground floor area greater than 884 square feet, which I know comes up every once in a while when we're looking at garages. So I mean, I, as you were, as you were talking about this stuff, I, I remembered that section and I went to go look at, see if it was specifically about residential garages. And I don't know if it's specific to, because in a separate section, they talk about residential garages and not in that one. So I just wanted to put it out there and it is something that you can, in that specific session, it says that you, we can authorize it by special permit, so.
He wasn't denied for that though, the square footage. And I do believe commercial is a lot larger, they're a lot larger. So I don't think that comes into play.
Yeah, we, if I may, we, we did, we did look at that in, in that question. It was not something that the building inspector decided was, was determinable within that denial because I'm not on a residential property and it's not, it's, it's a commercial use at the same time. And if you think about it, like a place like RG Automotive wouldn't be able to build what they did even up there, you know, and that's, because that, that square footage you're talking about makes complete sense for a residential garage. We, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want me putting this, if, if my house was there in town, you wouldn't want me putting this on the property.
It would be unusual, yeah.
Yeah, it would be highly unusual.
Okay, but when we talk about commercial use, the actual use, it's not being, it's not being used as a, for a commercial venture. The use itself is, is a, is a, a private use. It's, it's, so I'm, I'm wondering if perhaps, are we sure that it doesn't come under the residential definition?
I can address that.
Commercial property, I think it falls under commercial, Bert.
It falls under commercial?
I wouldn't think so. Even the building inspector didn't, didn't deny him on that either. So I think since it's a commercial property, it's, it's not limited to 884 square feet.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to address that use thing too, if you'd like.
Yeah, question also would be, now, Mr. Casa Grande, how many buildings are going to be on this property altogether? Or actually, if there's going to be three?
This would make three, there's already two.
All right. And other than, other than a half bath, that's the only water that's going to be out there is for a half bath. There's no office space, there's no anything else other than parking for?
No, it's not designed for that. It's not designed for that. Yeah, so there'd be no, no office space. I, my offices are in the front, you know, building in Warwick Insurance building. With, with regard to the commercial though, the property itself is owned commercially. The building will be owned commercially. So technically, when I put any, this is kind of when it gets into accounting and what is the business and what isn't type of situation, while, while I'll be occupying it with my own personal vehicles, will be parked there. And again, the commercial use I'm looking for is, is parking garage, commercial parking. Any money obviously to pay the bills, to pay the town's taxes, to pay the electric bill and anything else, you know, those checks all come from the LLC. So accounting wise, any money that I, I have to put money into the business to write those checks out, that is considered rent. So technically, I have to pay my own LLC rent to pay the bills and to cover the expenses for the property, which is, you know, by definition, commercial as well. And the fact that the lot is, is, is a commercial lot, so.
The other thing you made, you made mention was that the building itself was a 49% of the lot coverage, but that doesn't include the other two office buildings on the property.
No, it's, it's 20.4% including all the buildings.
I thought you said 40, 49% was what you said earlier. What's 49% then?
Right, nothing, nothing. So let me do, the lot coverage as it is now, the town is a 25% max. It exists with 3,933 square feet, which is 10.11. We would be going up with this building to 7,933 square feet, which is 20.4%.
Of the entire lot?
Of the entire lot, yes.
Okay.
And that's all the buildings.
Jerry or Dan, any questions?
The drain in the floor?
Yes.
The drain, just looking, I think, very small when I'm going off of here. Is that drain a, a floor drain or is that a drain for, you said there's going to be a bathroom in there?
No, that's actually a, a floor drain as required by the plumbing inspector because as garage door access, you have to have a floor drain with a holding tank. So that is the floor drain that is positioned between the two entrance garage doors and it will be pitched, the concrete obviously will be pitched towards that in case any runoff came off of cars coming in wet or covered in snow and salt and all that sorts of things, which I plan on no salt and snow entering the building. But that, that is a, that is a plumbing requirement.
And there's going to be, there's going to be a bathroom in there?
Yeah, there'd be a bathroom in it. If you're looking at it from the gable end in the front left corner over by where the septic tank is, will be, the bathroom will be over in that corner.
And you said it's heated?
Yeah.
It's just, this is just, I'm just going off of the plot line. I don't have anything else in front of me.
Sure.
It's just one story, there's no mezzanine, there's nothing.
No, not one story. 15-foot sidewalls and the total ridge height is 19.2 feet. It's not a particularly tall building. And again, the other positioning of it, it kind of keeps it hidden from the street back there. The approach is coming down from heading westbound. The neighboring property in my buildings block it from view. Directly in front of my property, it's blocked from view. And pretty much when you're coming eastbound, it's blocked by. And pretty much when you're coming eastbound, it's blocked by view, other than maybe fifteen feet as you drive by it, where you're, then should be concentrating on what's going on with the light at Walmart.
Jerry, any questions?
I, I think the current use is, is, is a garage is fine. What happens if you decide five years from now that you're not going to put your cars there? What would you use it for?
Okay, I think, you know, if it wasn't something that's allowed by right, obviously, they'd have to come back before the boards, if that were the case. Storage of, of some form, I've had, quite frankly, probably about thirty percent of the interest in the, the building I have for rent right now, the office building I have for rent right now on the property, was from people who wanted to store things in it. So interesting enough, storage seems to be something people are looking for. But, you know, my intention is, you know, this to be used at, as I've laid out, and anything else would obviously require coming back before your board for approval. And if that was something, you know, not approvable by you guys, obviously, that would be the time to, you know, that something like that would be stopped. But my, my long-term plans are very long-term. I mean, my, my family's owned this property since the sixties. Billboard was actually my uncle. So it's been a family business all along. We've been connected with the town for a long, long time. Each of us built our very first homes in the town, including myself, and you know, we have that kind of commitment. And I can't tell you what happened in fifty years, because I won't be around at that point, but during my tenure, this will be used as I, as I've laid it out.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, as far as, you know, I, I think it goes along with the neighborhood, you know, I, I don't particularly have any objections to it other than to be consistent. Seeing as there's no pre-existing structure there, I don't see any problem with the side variance, but there has to be some hardship for the rear, correct?
To go from thirty feet to, I mean, to, from forty feet to what, Dan, is it?
To ten and a half. Just, just, you know, for us to be consistent, something I think should just be talked about. Other than that, I don't, you know, I think because of where it is, you know, I, I wouldn't have a problem with it personally, but, you know, just looking at the bylaws.
Do, do you address that, Dan? Again, if you, if you compare my lot to some of the others, it's also one of the longer lots in town, as it's set up at, at, you know, just under an acre. Again, that narrowness of the lot means everything gets stretched. The parking requirements and everything else. So everything just gets, you know, stretched out. And obviously, lot coverage wise, you know, it's still five percent below what would be allowed on a, on a normal lot of this size, if I was more of a square than long skinny rectangle. But that's just, you know, kind of how that it, this, this one particular lot works itself out to.
Not understood. I just, you know, we, just trying, just in the, just to be fair to everybody who comes.
Understandable. I think this is a highly.
Yeah, and we've gone through, you know, there has to be a a hardship not created by the app.
Yeah. And I'd say, you know, this is a.
I'm just throwing that out there, so.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Understandable. It's a, it's a highly unusual business lot in the town. Let's put it that way. It's just, they just, I, I couldn't find another one. And I didn't go searching the rest of the town for business lots. I did one oh six and fifty-eight. And, and, you know, whoever broke it off and made it this way in the past, just, that's what they did.
No, I, I went back there and took a look at it, and, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah, yeah. And again, I don't feel that it's too, you know, it's, if Stop and Shop's property and Walmart's property weren't developed, I, I, I probably wouldn't be here asking you about it. You know, they are, and it's, you know, kind of not intrusive to what they have going on there. So, and for me, you know, this, this building being, you know, quote unquote, hidden a bit, serves, serves the use better for it. It doesn't want to be an upfront on one oh six building where I'd have to have all sorts of, you know, trying to secure it in other ways, because it isn't something that's going to have people in and out of it all day long, or anything. It's going to sit there as, it would sit there as a building. It would become a, you know, a nuisance for somebody to maybe do something to, so.
Jerry, you all said?
I think to Dan's, oh, sorry. I think to Dan's point, if if you, so I guess the question I have is, is what is the need for the four thousand square foot building? And would you be able to pare it down and keep it inside the, the setbacks?
Yeah, I, yeah, I've, good question. And I figured somebody would ask that one. And the, the, the forty-foot rear setback, again, with a, a lot, you know, it's a virtually an acre lot, just under an acre lot. But with the long narrowness of it, it just, it shoves everything back. The, the setbacks really restrict this lot immensely. And the size of the building, if I was to go with the forty-foot rear setback on it, would be virtually useless. It, it wouldn't hold, it wouldn't hold much. It wouldn't hold much.
How many cars are we talking about inside the garage?
Uh, the plan is four eighteen.
That's a lot. That's, that's a lot.
Nine left, nine right.
And I guess the, the worry, the worry I have is we had, and, and I don't think it'll be this case, but we've had people come to us before with specific, specifically with garages, as a matter of fact, in town, who have, who have told us one thing is going to happen. And then years later, it, it's a completely different scenario, and I'm driving by wondering what happened. And I don't know if this is the case, but four thousand square feet, uh, four thousand square foot bullet, building setback in the commercial district. And, and I'm not sure what the hardship is. I'm also not sure, I mean, in, in five of the six points under garages, it does not mention residential, and in one specific point it does. So I'm not, I'm not sold either on the fact that it doesn't apply to commercial use. You made a good point about RG and, and all those other things, so that could be the case. And that's not necessarily a deciding factor, but I, 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 I'm not necessarily seeing why the building couldn't be smaller to get less than eighteen cars and meet the, the variance.
Yeah, actually, so I miss, I misspoke at the eighteen, sixteen. Because at one point, I was trying to pull it further forward, and it was going to be a little bit longer, actually. So it was, it's sixteen is what I had ended up with. To go the forty feet, that would bring it down to the equivalent of maybe fitting six cars, and that's currently under the size of the collection. So use-wise, it wouldn't be usable for me at that point. As well as, you know, ju- just the use of the building wouldn't, wouldn't work for what I have and what, what I, what I'd like to do. That's basically it. And again, we're still in all this, the joshing online. I, I wish it was a square lot, because a lot of things would be a lot easier.
You wouldn't be here.
Yeah, it's probably not, so. Yeah, it kind of is what it is. And then i- i- in doing it, I, ideally, obviously, I wanted to design it, you know, to maximize what I'm hoping to do. And then I also, you know, in with my, with my neighbors developed, you know, the intrusion to the rear there to Walmart, you know, it's not really a hardship on them either, you know, at, at that point. You know, being in, in, positioning it where I'd like to position it. You know, it, it's not really detrimental to the neighbors.
How, how far off the lot line are you with the front building to the right?
Front building to the right is at fifteen feet from the right-hand lot.
So if you turn the building and you had ten and a half feet on the left and fifteen feet on the right, you can't position a building that size in there?
Yes.
And keep the forty in the back? In other words, i- i- if you don't change the two side lot lines, is there a way to do it and keep the forty in the back?
No, because of park.
Okay.
Access to the parking is a problem.
So, so what I'm seeing here is existing parking spots?
Uh, a- and some expanded parking spots. Currently, the, the, at, at about the beginning of the, well, before the beginning of the building, we've added parking spots down the right-hand side to accommodate the planning requirement for parking as well.
Okay.
Even though the building isn't going to create a need for more parking, it doesn't have, exactly hurt me to have a little bit more parking over there as it is. And that's all gravel.
But you get what I'm saying. If you turn that rectangle the other way, pull it forward, the bu- if you turn the building ninety degrees and pull it forward, it just wouldn't work for you?
No, it wouldn't work. It wouldn't be able to position the septic system or the parking.
So it couldn't go behind it?
Um, no, we looked at that, actually. We wouldn't be able to.
Okay. Just, just throwing out ideas.
No, no, I, I understand. I, I, I've, I've played Jenga on the lot a lot, so.
What is the large black dotted line that you have running around here? I don't see anything telling me what it is here.
Uh, that dotted line is the gravelled parking area. And that's, that's kind of the area where we'd be, where we'd be working back there. Now, obviously, we didn't, we didn't do a whole lot of setup on the frontal lot, because we weren't changing anything down there.
So why couldn't you pull that building at least ten feet forward then?
Um, ten feet forward.
Well, the stuff that, the pits would also move forward also, but I don't see anything stopping it from going forward.
I, I still couldn't get to forty feet, though, ever. So I, my, I, I thought process was we're in, we're, we're inside it regardless, you know. I can't get to forty feet.
So Scott, how far away are you from that building in front of it?
From the building in front?
Yeah.
I'm not positive I have an exact mention on that. Let me just take a look here. I would say it's approximately, well, if I go by the parking spaces, one, two, three, four, eight. About seventy or eighty feet. And that's all park, that's parking in between and runoff areas. Again, some of the runoff areas come to play in it, too. You gotta, gotta put the water somewhere, too.
So pulling that building thirty feet forward isn't doable?
It's not doable with the runoff to get access to the front of it. I don't know how to get access to the back.
Is that what that twenty-four inch perf PVC, is that the water runoff?
Uh, yes. And that's kind of where our existing runoff area is too.
Gotcha. So you're pulling the building forward, you can't access the front of the building then?
I wouldn't be able to swing in to come into the front of it.
Right.
And there's also elevation changes there. The building goes up towards the back.
Yeah.
So it, it wouldn't make maneuver. Again, I, we play a bit of Jenga with the whole thing, and it's, 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 it's hard to, hard to fit it in elsewhere. And again, pulling it forward along that area then becomes more intrusive to the existing property that Rosen Realty owns too.
Gotcha.
I'll be kind of intruding on their area. This area back here seemed the least intrusive to the.
So where you proposed putting it, you have a tree line on the back of the property and the side.
Yeah.
Those trees are on the abutis properties, so you wouldn't be taking any trees down, correct?
I'm taking down some trees where the building is, but there are trees maintained along the edges that belong to the abutters as well.
So it blocks some of view also.
And, and the Walmart has, has a large fence all the way across the back. And we have a fence, a stockade fence down our left-hand side, which used to go all the way, but is mostly destroyed back there in the woods now. And after the project, that would be extended all the way down to the corner.
Extended or replaced?
It's hard to say replaced, because it's been gone for a while. That, that fence out, rotted out years ago back there. We've maintained the rest of the fence you see when you drive by, but when you get back to the woods, it's gone.
So how tall are the doors going to be on this?
Excuse me?
How tall are the doors going to be?
Uh, the doors, I believe, are ten feet.
It says twelve feet wide, but what's?
Twelve foot wide, ten foot tall.
Okay. So Peter, as far as the size and the number of cars, when you're collecting cars, you need a lot of room. Even at the size of this building, sixteen cars, I think it might be tight in there also.
Yeah, that, that's, that's like the winter putaway. Not that much fits in in the rest of the time. I do have quite a bit of, quite a bit of space at my garage at home where, where, where these will be retired for the winter, and that's when it gets a bit tighter, i.e. we push them into place for the winter.
Right, right.
Then a bunch come out and come home, and then they circulate around.
It's like a bunch of sardines in there.
Yeah.
Well, that's a, that works out about two hundred and fifty square feet per car. And you, is that tight, Bob? You, you would know for car storage? If you're four thousand square feet at sixteen cars, that's two hundred and fifty square feet a car.
Well, you need the center aisle to move down, though, too. You need the center, and then you move left and right, left and right.
Uh, I'm concerned also, uh, that this is, uh, is a metal space building, for lack of a better term. Anything textured or, or what, what's it going to look like, Scott?
Yeah, the, the colors, we're matching the colors to my existing buildings, so it would be the same tan coloration with white trim on it to, to match in with the buildings as best we can.
It's not a straight metal building, silver, yellow metal, you know, metal.
Raised, raised seam style building. Again, most of it, most of it, again, is very much blocked out by between the, you know, what would be the fence going down the left-hand side and the buildings in front of it. But color-wise, which would be what you, you really see from the street and everything, will be very similar to our existing buildings. I was considering doing, doing the roof in a dark color, a separate metal, a dark color to match, you know, kind of like, hey, we, we have black asphalt roofs on the other buildings.
So going to be lighting out in the parking lot or anything like that?
Um, not beyond what we already have. There'll be lights over the doors. It'll be like a light on the eve, and, but it'd be motion sensor, and it won't be something that's on all the time.
gentlemen, anybody else have concerns about, you know, the fencing, the protection around or anything like that, as far as conditions or anything like that? You know, to separate it from the main parking lots of, from both Stop and Shop and, and Walmart? As well as, what's that, the Lionville Restaurant beside it, Scott? Is that what it is?
Yeah, yeah. That's the Rosen property. Yeah, so there's a fence all along that property line, which I, as I told you, the rotted out section when we're done would be replaced. No sense replacing that now. And that would meet up with the Walmart fence that they have across the back of their property.
And, and that's a, what about to the, you know, to the vacant lot side, is there, is there anything over there?
We don't have anything there currently. I think that's probably something that will get addressed when, when that lot gets developed, I think, in the future. I don't, it didn't make sense for me to put up a fence to that right now. It's, it's pretty heavily brushed. Trees have grown up all over that lot. And I'd work with whoever, whoever goes in there to, for us to sort out what we do there. Hopefully, somebody will go in there sometime.
All right. Charlie, Amy Questle was, is with us, correct? Did I see you around there?
Correct. We, we, she's, as far as I know, she was mostly here for a different permit. I don't know her boxes there. She's not visible right now. Are you asking her to come in on this, or what?
Uh, not on this particular one. I just add something.
So I, one of the questions that, Bert, that Peter was asking about on the restrictions for garages, if you work backwards, the reference for those, for that section, the bylaw, the twelve F section, goes back to garages that are listed under residential uses rather than commercial use. goes back to garages that are listed under residential uses rather than commercial uses. So the only reason you would go to that section would be for a garage that's residential in character rather than commercial in nature, whether it's something like this or RG or something else. You wouldn't use that section for anything other than a residential garage without any residents there on the property. I don't see, obviously, a number of other questions, but I think um, looking at that section in terms of making a decision, is a red herring. Not, not, not in Paul Peters, I mean, it's there, and you've discussed this, he mentioned a number of times with other uh, petitions that have come in, but the difference is that this is specifically pointing out residential rather than any other.
Does, does it say that somewhere that I'm, I was looking through and I could, I missed it, and it's, it.
Oh yeah, you, you need to go to the use table.
Yeah.
So if you go to the residential section of the use table.
Yeah.
And then you'll see the notation there in the use table. So residential uses, so there's garage or barn, and then it says C one sixty-seven dash twelve F. So it's the next to last use under residential uses, then you go to institutional, for instance, and then you go to commercial. So that, where it's citing twelve F, that's where it goes, it goes from that residential use in the use list to that section twelve F.
Okay, thank you.
I think this actually is an auxiliary building, there's a section on auxiliary building.
How is that different though, Dan?
Same set, uh, anything over three hundred feet requires the same setbacks as the thirty on the side and the forty in the back. And you need a special permit to get a variance on that. So we're still left with the hardship question.
Would you like to address that, Dan?
Well, all I can say is, I'm glad there's five of you here tonight, so I don't have to vote. It's I, I, again, it's one of those situations where, in my opinion, it fits, but does, I don't, you know, personally, I wouldn't have a problem with it. It's just, we have to be fair and consistent across the board. You know, if there was a, um, if there was a um, a footprint, a structure, anything that was there before, that, you know, we could hang our hat on and say, you know, like things we have before us now, uh, in this case, we don't, it's a new building, um.
There, interestingly enough, there, there was a garage approved in this back corner in nineteen seventy-eight.
Right.
You never built it, but it wasn't, it wasn't this big, it was a three-car garage in the back corner, but.
Or bylaws are probably different back then.
Oh yeah, I'm sure they were, I'm sure, I'm sure everything, everything would be different then.
It, 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 Dan, Dan is not wrong, it's an increase in a non-conformity from fifteen feet. Also, the, the rear, I think that the reason why it's so difficult to fit on the lot is because it doesn't fit on the lot, and, and it doesn't seem like the uses is ridiculous at all, and I, but I don't, I don't know if it meets the hardship of the bylaws. Yeah.
Yeah, again, the only, the only thing is the, is the shape of, the shape of the lots, kind of the hardship scenario, and it being the only lot of its kind in the town.
But, and to, specifically to that point, you could build a garage in that spot, just not that big. And that, I think is the issue. It's, it's not, it's not that you can't have something on that spot, it's, it's that you can't have something in that spot that big.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, were you gonna say something?
We need a site visit to get an idea of the hardships and the, the topography of the land?
You know something, I think that's a good idea, uh, to be honest with you, Bob. Uh, get a, a, a better idea of uh, exactly uh, how close, these setbacks are close, they're, they're, they're close.
I understood that when I was asking for them, I
Right.
Trust me.
All right, well, why don't we do that? Uh, well, first of all, let me, let me do this, Charlie, we got uh, people uh, that would like to.
Let's see, I have uh, no one on the notes asking for, to speak, I'm looking for hands. Going once, going twice, and see no hands, and I don't have a comment uh, uh, from anyone actually asking to speak to this particular petition. There is, okay, Gordon R. Andrews, let's see, where are you? Here we are, okay. Gordon R. Andrews, Bert, would like to speak.
Yes. Okay. Uh, what are the requirements for the hardship? Can you, do you have those written out?
I think that's part of the problem.
Well,
Does state law de- define it? Does the state law define the hardship? I don't know if I'm talking through or not.
The, the hardship, as Mr. Grady, Castle Grady presented it, was the uh, blaming was the shape and the uh, the length and the fact that it's a, frontage is only a hundred feet. Uh, that's, that's the hardship that, if, do I have that correct, Mr. Castle Grady? I don't want to put words in your mouth here, but that is, that is what uh, you, you stated previously.
But the shape of the lot can't be the hardship.
I agree. I agree.
It just seems like it's, it's ten pounds of shit in a five-pound bag.
That's the technical term.
So it's not so much the shape of the lot, it's the lack of the frontage. Lack of the front, the, the lots.
With lack of width.
Lack of width.
Nope, but, but, and Mr. Andrews, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what Mr. Andrews is, is trying to point out is, is basically the same as what uh, Mr. Poselone said, it, it, yes, it, it is only a hundred uh, feet of frontage in the front, however, uh, a, a smaller building could fit uh, in the same lot.
Exactly, you, you could fit something in there, it's not like, it's not like you'd be restricted to the point where you can't build something, and you already have two buildings. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Andrews. Anyone else, Charlie?
Oh wait, let's see. I do not see anybody else's hand up. I do not have anybody texting or chatting, saying I want to speak to this, so.
Now, would you guys like to, obviously you mentioned to come see the, see the
Yes.
I'm happy to host.
I agree.
I'm there almost every day, so.
It's a, it's norm- it is the practice of the board that uh, you know, we do a site inspection, uh, un- unless it is moved to, to waive it, of course, by vote, but uh, I uh, I agree, I, I think uh, to see the actual
True.
shape and, and where it was, uh, our next meeting, Alana, what are we looking at? Our next meeting is what, May third, does that sound right?
Yep, May third.
Uh, Alana, what's the Saturday before that?
May first.
May first, is that, uh, May first, I mean, that's what we usually do, Saturday, guys, you know, you, whatever's convenient for you guys, Saturday's okay with me, the first. You want to make it early?
I would mean.
I would mean.
All right, why don't we uh, schedule a, a site inspection then for uh, for uh, May first? Uh, nine, nine-thirty, guys?
Nine works.
Kasai, you gonna be up by that time?
Yeah.
He's across the street all the time anyway.
Uh, okay, well, we'll go for uh, nine o'clock, May first, we'll do a site inspection. Mr. Castle Grady, is that possible to maybe have the uh, the building, the four corners staked out by uh, by May first?
Um, I can probably get that done, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I think so.
So we could, we could see basically the dimensions, the size, and, and exactly where we'll go from there.
Sure.
All right, then, I'll uh,
I'll make a motion.
Then, to uh, uh, continue uh, petition number nine thirty-three till uh, Saturday, May first at uh, nine o'clock, which we will do the site inspection and then we'll uh, schedule uh, the petition for the May third meeting. Do I have a, a, a motion to?
We need a motion for a site inspection first, correct?
That's, exactly, that's what I was just asking.
So I'll make a motion for petition nine thirty-three for a site inspection on May first at nine o'clock.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a, a motion and a second on the floor, uh, to uh, uh, continue the meeting till May first, the site inspection, all those in favor say aye, Kasai?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
And Dan?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, Dan, we'll uh, we'll meet up uh, May first, uh, nine AM, how's that? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Castle. I'm sorry.
We do vote to continue the hearing, actually, to May third.
Oh, F, on the set, okay.
So I'll make a motion.
Then to continue the meeting till uh, the hearing of nine thirty-three to our next scheduled meeting, which would be May third, two thousand twenty-one. I need a motion and a second, please.
So I'll make a motion for petition nine thirty-three to continue it until our May third meeting.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor to uh, schedule for our, our next zoning board hearing on uh, May third. Uh, Mr. Castle Grady, you'll have to get in touch with Alana, she'll give you a time and whatnot.
Okay, that's fine.
You would fit in.
Yeah.
And uh, so uh, all those in favor, please uh, say aye, Kasai?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
And Dan, yourself?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So uh, we'll see you Saturday, the first, and then uh, we'll continue that your hearing on uh, May third.
Excellent, thank you very much, guys, thank you.
Guys. Wow, we're running a little behind time, all right? Chaka?
Yeah.
All right, moving right along. We'll move on to our next uh, hearing is petition number nine three four. Um, thirty-one Ocean Ave. Okay, nine three four, the Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, at uh, seven twenty-five PM via Zoom on the application by Kevin Perkins for a special permit and variances to raise an existing building and rebuild a single-family dwelling located at thirty-one Ocean Ave, Halifax, Mass. O two three three eight. Said property is owned by Ronald Coria, as shown on assessment map nineteen, lot twenty-three, title reference book three three four six nine, page O three four two. The applicant is seeking a special permit to raise an existing structure and rebuild a single-family dwelling, which would constitute a continuation, alteration, and extension of a non-conforming use in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaws, section one sixty-seven eight A, eight D, and eight C. The applicant is also seeking variances of the rear setback from thirty point eight feet to eighteen feet, and a left-side setback from thirteen point one feet to seven feet, in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaws, such as one sixty-seven eleven, as well as a variance from the maximum lot coverage from seventeen point nine percent to twenty-nine point seven percent in accordance with the Table of uh, Dimensional and Density Regulations, chapter one sixty-seven eleven of the Court of Town of Halifax, area of zone residential, petition number nine three four. See, Mr. Perkins, are you with us?
Yes, I am, can everyone hear me?
Oh, okay. All right, uh, Mr. Perkins, why don't you uh, give us a little idea what you're applying for here and what you need for consideration?
Yes, sir, uh, my name's Kevin Perkins, I'm the applicant. Uh, what you have in front of you, it's a plan for thirty-one Ocean Ave. Um, what it is, it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. I believe the lot goes back to eighteen ninety, um, the land of Lake Mont Ponce had that plan for that whole neighborhood. Um, the lot is a twenty-eight hundred square foot lot, it is thirty-five feet wide and eighty feet long. Um, with the pond actually at about seventy feet, so about ten feet of the lot is actually in the water. Um, what we did was we, we relocated the structure, the proposed structure is further to the rear of the property in respect to uh, your bylaws to allow for two off-site parking. So we went from nineteen point eight of the existing structure to twenty-eight point six feet. Um, on the right-side setback, we went from one point five feet to two feet, just to, to leave a little more room on that side for an overdig. Um, and that side also, there's, there's a paper street there, not a, no structure or anything there. Um, what there is actually though, is that there's a twenty-two inch um, corrugated drainage pipe over there. And that's part of our proposal too, is to also repair that for the town. What we plan to do is to, on the water side, the ocean, um, the water side of Ocean Ave, we plan to repair that pipe, put in a uh, sewer manhole, and replace the pipe to the existing head wall to the pond. Um, now, on the left side of the property, we have seven feet of setback there, which should not disturb the, the abutter to the left. And to the rear, th- there's no abutter, it's the pond. Um, and what we have is uh, eighteen feet proposed. Um, du- due to the fact that the lot is only twenty-eight hundred square feet, um, that's the reason for, for the request for the lot coverage, because as I, to, to reason for the hardship, that there's no way you could put a structure on this lot and not need a variance request. For a setback, you could do it for a lot coverage, but the reason that we requested the lock coverage was to actually have a single-story house rather than a two-story. We could meet the lock coverage, however, with the meetings we had for conservation and border health, which have both approved this plan and the septic design is approved, um, Abut is concerned about the height of the structure. So what we did was we kept it a single-story structure, and due to the fact of building code, you know, EGRS requirements, bedroom size restrictions, um, you know, hallways, stairways, that kind of stuff, that we had to have a, a minimum size, um, which I don't think it's really, you know, overkill, it's, it's a eight hundred and thirty-two square foot footprint for, for dwelling, which I believe in the last hearing, we were discussing garages, and this is actually smaller than what you would allow for an accessory garage. So I, I don't think it's unreasonable. Um, and as proposed, I, I, I really don't see how it would be more detrimental to the neighborhood. If anything, it's, it's gonna improve the neighborhood and bring the property values up. Um, I don't know what more I can really tell you about it. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Alana, was this the uh, the picture of the uh, existing house that's there now that you sent us just prior to the meeting?
Yes.
Is that this one? Did, did you guys all get that?
Yes.
Yes, yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Wetlands. All right, uh, I'll open it up to uh, members of the board, gentlemen, you have any uh, questions?
I, I actually have a couple of questions, one from Mr. Perkins and one to possibly you, Bert, also. So one of the setbacks on the right side is two feet, is that correct?
Correct, the existing setback is one point five feet and we're going to two feet.
So, um, okay, Mr. Chairman, that's not, I don't see it in the um, public notice.
Well, we're, we're making it more conforming, so it shouldn't need a variance request on that right side.
But I think you still need it, right?
We're going from one point five to two.
You're going from one point five to two.
On the right side setback.
It's a decrease in the non-conformity.
Correct.
So do you not have to ask, Bert?
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. It has.
Bert, you may want to check with counsel at some point.
Okay, I uh, I, it's my belief that, that you do, even though it's a pre-existing non-conforming. Uh, yeah. All right, Bob, anything else? You have other questions?
Uh, that was it at the present time.
Jerry, or Pete, Kasai?
It, it definitely is improving the property, it definitely, um, in where they could, they increased or they decreased the, the the non-conformity. the non-conformity. Two sides, it looks like they had to increase it, I think, on the other two sides. Um, the difference, I would say, in and the hardship is you can't, like you said, you can't build anything unless you're, you know, you need a variance. So this is, you know, unlike the other stuff we've talked about in the past. So the, the lot coverage is, um, you have to talk about the hardship for that. I think that's separate from the, the side setbacks and the rear setbacks. I think those kind of make sense, but the, the lock coverage, and he, he addressed that. With the, the height issue, so.
Uh, Mr. Perkins, what, why does that pipe have to be repaired? Is there, uh, are there drainage problems or water problems down there now on this property?
There are. Um, so it's a corrugated metal pipe and it's actually rotted. There's no bottom left to the pipe. Um, where it goes to the existing concrete head wall. And so that pipe is actually leaching onto this property. Um, so it's gonna do two things. It's gonna correct drainage that comes from the opposite side of the street that goes, I believe, all the way up Union Park Street to Hanson. Um, and that brings all that to the pond, so it's gonna help that out, and it's also going to resolve the water infiltration onto the site. It's actually destroyed the old foundation of the existing dwelling. And on, on the plan as well, we're, we're also, um, by moving the house back, it allowed us also, I, I believe I mentioned, to put a replacement septic system in that actually is compliant. Um, it's fully sized. It will have treatment as well. And if you look at the plan, there's a, a dotted line, and what that is, is a fifty-foot wetland setback, so it allowed us to get septic system out of the fifty-foot from the pond. I mean, wha- the way it's proposed really is, I don't see any better way you could do it. Aside from the question of, do you want to see this be two stories and meet the lock coverage? Um, which I don't think the abutters or the neighborhood would, that'd be really be doing them justice. Or do you want to see it built as proposed, which I think it's really the best proposal you could do on such a small site. And as I had mentioned, it's, it's eight hundred and thirty-two square foot footprint, which, you know, is not unreasonable for a single-family dwelling. Um, that's pretty small, and it's actually smaller than like, like the last discussion. You could do an accessory garage on your property.
How big is the, uh, existing house right now? How many square feet?
Um, the existing structure is, I don't have it in front, I think it's around a little over five hundred square feet. But keep in mind, this, this dwelling that was built then, I mean, codes were a lot different, and now because of building codes, it there's minimum size requirements for bedrooms. It's minimum side with, you know, with on hallways, doorway openings, stairways, that kind of stuff that will actually eat up a lot of room. Um, also, you now have to have two-by-six exterior walls that takes up, you know, living space inside, so as, due to these requirements, you have to make the, the footprint a little bigger of the house to still accomplish the same thing. And if we go too small with this house, it's really not doing anyone justice that would ever live there because it's just gonna be an unproportionate, non-user-friendly dwelling. So I, I really designed the whole thing really to kind of work.
Okay, Mr. Perkins, I'm looking at your, uh, your drawings on the conception of the house, and I'm looking at a two-story house. A first one, second one.
Yeah, so what it, what it is, is it's, it's a one-story with a basement. It's a walkout in the back. Um, it's like a raised ranch. It's a split entry. It's got split entry stairs, um, because the, the front yard is gonna come up approximately another two feet, um, due to the septic system and high water table. So the back is gonna be a walkout, um, to the pond. So that, that house there that you're looking at, you would essentially add another full story on if you want me to make it smaller and meet the lock coverage, which would probably tower over the other houses in the neighborhood. The house plan that you have in your hand will fit in that neighborhood. Um, I've done a few other projects in that neighborhood, um, and I, I think that would really you know, fit, fit with the neighborhood. And it wouldn't be any more detrimental than what's there. It would be a significant improvement.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions of, uh, Mr. Perkins?
I think he's got it covered pretty good.
Yeah, I was just having a tough time looking at the picture here. It looked like two stories to me. How high is the, is the, uh, the peak of the roof, uh, Mr. Perkins?
Um, from
From the ground.
Existing gr- from the existing grade in the back at the highest point. Um, like I said, the front yard will come up a little bit, but the backyard, it's gonna be around twenty-five feet, somewhere around there at the highest point. That's from basically the, you know, the pond elevation in the back at the walkout grade, at the existing grade in the back.
And what about in the front that's, uh, visible from the street?
That's gonna be probably another four feet lower. Because I believe you guys have a bylaw that you, your, um, top of foundation has to be two feet above the crown of the road.
Correct.
Something along those lines? Yeah, okay. So yeah, I would say, yeah, it's gonna be about, uh, probably four feet lower than what I told you. It's not gonna be any higher than the houses in the neighborhood. I can guarantee you that. It will, that, that house will fit in the neighborhood. If you want a, you know, a colonial to go there to meet the lock coverage, it's, it's not gonna fit. It will fit, but it's not gonna go well with the neighborhood.
Gentlemen, anybody else have any more questions? Pete, Jerry, Casaya? Alright, uh, Charlie, could, uh, is there anyone else that, uh, given you a flag here that would like to speak on this?
In this case, Amy Eltrup asked to speak to the board.
Sure. Ms. Trup.
Hi, everybody. Um, I was wondering, um, does, does the applicant own the property?
No. The owner of the property is, in the application, is owned by Ronald Coria.
Okay.
As shown on the Assessors Map nineteen, lot twenty-three.
And can we see the plan?
Uh, sure, it should be, uh, Alana, is it, uh?
Yeah, let me bring it up.
Oh, okay, thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chair, could I, could I ask, um, a, a question to the abutter? That was just speaking?
Probably I don't believe is in a butter.
Oh, I was just gonna ask what, what house number she lived in. I was just curious if she had any concerns or not of the project.
Well, if she had concerns, she did ask her questions, but, uh, we're gonna try to get a, uh, here we go.
Okay.
Amy, is that, can you see that? Did you get that?
I did, thanks, Brett. So you're moving the house away from the water, but closer to the back?
That's incorrect. The back is the water. It's moving from the street closer to the water to allow for more off-street parking. It will have two off-street parking spaces and to give it further separation from the right-of-way.
And the septic, the septic system is in actually the, the front yard, Amy, right there on Ocean Ave.
Okay, so, oh, so, so we're moving the house closer to the pond?
Correct.
Correct. And conservation has approved this.
What was the hardship on, on moving it closer to the pond?
The, so a septic system could fit on the property and be out of the fifty-foot. It's more important to keep the septic system out of the fifty-foot than it would be to keep the structure. The structure's not hurting anything once it's there. The septic system, well, we all know how that works.
How many bedrooms are in the current house and how many?
Two bedrooms and, two bedrooms, and there's no increase in flow. Board of Health has also approved this plan. And it does have a microfast treatment unit that'll be going in for, it will also do nitrogen reduction to aerate the system and pretreat it prior to when it goes into the ground. Are there any other questions?
One.
Amy, that, that good? You have any more questions, Amy?
I'm just, I'm just looking at the, uh, Assessors record right now. Hold on one second. Please. You can come back to me if there's anybody else with questions.
I have a question.
And, uh, okay, you're, you're, please?
Huh? Julie Mack?
And your address, ma'am?
Um, thirty-six Ocean.
Okay, and your question, please?
Um, I'm wondering about the environmental impact, um, where it's so close to the pond. Also, the pond gets high, and he was talking about a walkout to the pond. That area often gets flooded in that yard there. And also, with a house that size, it, you know, you wouldn't have the grass and stuff to kind of absorb all the water and whatever around there because you'd have so much structure.
Well, I do know, uh, Mr. Perkins had made mention about the, well, the, i- if you're on the plot plan on your screen that's in front of you, uh, he's repairing that, that, uh, pipe there that, uh, would improve very much the, the, uh, the water flow off from, from Ocean Ave and the rest of the houses in the neighborhood. Cause I, if I
No, that, that's true. I'm talking about from the pond itself, when the pond gets high. I think that is a good improvement, but I wondered about when the pond is high, how that would impact it.
It wouldn't impact it any differently than the dwelling that's there or the ones beside it.
Well, the one beside it often gets water in the yard, too.
Well, I, I don't think, you know, bottom line, Mr. Perkins, there's any way to prevent any, you know, from the pond. Do you know, the, the water line to increase or decrease, there's no control over that, but as far as, uh, you know, lot coverage itself, uh, I don't think that would in any way affect, you know, the drainage or the, or the, uh, the, the, the water being accumulated on the lot any more than what it is. And, and less, unless you, unless I'm mistaken. I mean, if you'd like to address that, Mr. Perkins, that would be fine.
My, I, I don't think we're, we're making anything more of a problem for the neighborhood than what's already there. I think we're increasing it significantly between the septic system repair, between the drainage repair and the new structure. Is there a concern, is there a concern, ma'am, of how this would negatively impact your property?
No, it's a concern for the pond is my concern is if it were, I mean, I understand improving the pipe will certainly be helpful.
Sure, sure. So conservation has already approved this, ma'am. This is a zoning hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Perkins, her, her, her questions go through the chair to, to yourself. We, we need answers. But the fact that the septic system is in the front of the house, whether the septic system was in the rear of the, of the house or on the rear of the lot closest to the pond, uh, I don't see the difference. I- i- unless I'm missing it, you know, the six one half and those are another. Con- conservation itself, it, it, you know, had to have reviewed this and whatnot. And I, I do think, you know, because of the shape and the size of the lot, he, he is pretty much restricted as to, uh, whether he moves the, the building forward. Oh, that's right. You couldn't move the building forward because you don't want the septic system close to the, uh, to the pond. You need that fifty-foot buffer. So that's, uh, that's pretty much it. Okay. Uh, Charlie, anybody else have any other questions?
I don't know if Ms. Trup has anything else she wanted to say. She said to get back.
I, I, I do. I would just say that the rest of us have to comply with our small lots and have to stay within the footprints. And it's more substantial to be by the water in these cases that we can't expand our footprints or move them. So how is it, okay, like, it, it doesn't, it doesn't jive with the rest of the town and on all the, all the grandfather lots? It's not fair to every else, everybody else in the town.
Amy, where else could you put that septic system if you weren't putting it in, in the front yard? I mean, wha- what else could you do? It, it's limited. It's twenty-eight hundred square feet. I, I don't know where else you could possibly
I think tight tanks usually are used. I think tight, tight tanks are usually used, but we can't move houses in all areas of the town, so we, we're he- hearing a lot of this about giving variances what, to, to people to move their footprints. That's not, it's not okay. The reason the bylaws are there is to protect the town. And in this case, I don't know how conservation would let this go. I mean, you can't move a house closer to the pond, period, end of story. So I don't know how it's approved. And we all know that.
It was, well, and we know that on a pre-existing non-conforming use, that house was there, was certainly, uh, within a very short distance of the lot, you know, being only twenty-eight hundred square feet. I do think that's, uh, part of the hardship is, is just, just that very reason is limited to, to where, what he could do and, and how he could put it to remain fifty-foot buffer.
And we knew that when they bought it in two thousand and six.
I, I see your point. Okay, does, uh, Charlie, anybody else have any other questions?
Uh, could I just mention something if I could?
Oh, who says please?
Uh, Dawn Barrows from thirty-three Ocean and Ave. I'm right next door to that, uh, monstrosity that's been there since we've lived here.
What side are you on, Mr. Barrows?
I am on the, uh, from the street on the right side.
On the right side, okay.
And, uh, everything has been approved. I've been following this right along. Everything's been approved. Uh, I know sometimes it doesn't seem fair, but when you live in this neighborhood and you do have to look at that every day, and if there was anything that was going to be damaging to the pond, and I understand all my neighbors, I know, know them, uh, and they're, the other ones are kind of excited to see this actually improve the neighborhood. And Kevin Perkins, who I don't really know, but I've seen the other work he's done in, in the neighborhood, has, has done a great job. So that's all I wanted to say. Uh, if there was any environmental impact, I wouldn't want it there either, but I just don't see it. There's a sea wall there. Uh, it never goes above the, that, the water never rises that high. And I have, also have a, uh, uh, sea, well, pond wall, if you will. And it's never, ever in the ten years, it's never even come close to a overflowing.
Mr. Barrows, how is the, uh, the, the water drainage and stuff, you know, that the, the previous, uh, speaker mentioned that in her yard, some of the backyards get wet or whatnot. Do you feel that i- if that drainage, uh, pipe was repaired as, as, uh, Mr. Perkins was, uh, describing that it would help to, uh, alleviate that problem?
Uh, one is, one is, was a major downfall is you're gonna see, uh, a good flow come out of that pipe. And he's right, that pipe is just gone. It's gotta be repaired. He's gonna do all that work too, which is, is pretty cool. Uh, but we, he has a, he already has a, a wall there. It's not going to, uh, leach. That's, that's the good thing. That not many people have a wall like that around. It, it, everything, all the other yards further down the road. Actually, when it rains, it just takes everything off the lawn and right into the water, and we don't want that either. So hopefully, uh, this will be an improvement. I think it's gonna be an improvement.
Seeing that the house was, uh, the pictures that we got of the, uh, existing structure that's, uh, currently on that lot, uh, I don't see how it couldn't be an improvement to the, to the, uh, neighborhood down.
I understand the concern of, of, uh, of, or maybe the fairness of, of moving the the structure closer to the water, but it's gonna be elevated. It's gonna be up, except, I don't know, uh, how else to put it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Dan?
So if anybody's interested, um, uh, Mass. General Law forty-eight, section ten talks about variances. And if you read through it, you know, it, it's kind of vague, which is why we're always having issues. And so we have an owner of a property. Why, it, was the building occupied or is the building occupied right now?
I do not.
It's listed as vacant in two thousand and eighteen.
Question's not to you, Amy, to the chairman.
I believe right now it, it is vacant. It's, uh, just, uh, I believe, uh, the abutter described it as a monstrosity that's there now.
And how long has the owner owned it? We're saying since two thousand and six?
I believe, uh, Ms. Trup said it was two thousand and six.
So when was the last time it was lived in? Can we find that out?
I couldn't, I don't know how you could find that out.
Well, is the on, the owner or, or the builder, the applicant, do they know?
Uh, Mr. Perkins, do you know that, Ed? Or would you, would Mr. Coria know when it was last occupied?
So I, I have it under contract to purchase from the players, and the taxes occurring on the property, they use the property. They go down there, hang out. They don't sleep there. They don't live there. Um, they use it, use it for the pond. Um, they just kind of use it as just a little getaway. And, you know, they had plans to do something with this property over the years when they retired and they've just kind of changed gears on it. No one's ever really done anything with it. Um, so they put it up for sale. I have it under contract with them to, to do that. done anything with it. Um, so they put it up for sale. I have it under contract with them to, to do that. And, um, unfortunately, if this doesn't get, get through, the deal's going to fall apart and it's going to continue to sit there. Um, and I'd like to really clean it up for everyone.
So if, if you look through, if I look through or anybody looks through, uh, Master Law Forty Eight, Section Ten. You know, one of the criteria for hardship is, uh, let me find it here. Um, that little enforcement of the zoning ordinance would cause substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. Well, that's vague. Um, this could be causing a financial hardship for someone, you know, they're not asking to put up an auxiliary building, you know, it's a home. Um, obviously, you know, the Conservation Commission, if the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health are okay with it. Um, you know, it, it's not as cut as dry as everybody thinks, you know, this interpretation here. And, you know, it, it's, it's one thing to look at a town bylaw and say, oh, black and white, that's it. But when you dig deeper and you look at the mass general laws, you know, what do we, every time we talk, we have to get an attorney involved? Obviously, we, we have the responsibility and the authority as the board to make these determinations. Um, you know, this, this could be a case of hardship, financial hardship. I guess what I'm trying to get at.
All right. And, uh, Mr. Perkins, uh, let me just ask you a question also, uh, you represent the Pories? Uh, I mean, you did on the, on the conservation and the board of health. You, you are the representative for, for.
Yes, so. Yes, sir. So I have it under contract for myself. Um, I'm also a general contractor. I plan to do the build and I actually plan to actually live here. Um, I grew up in Hanson. Um, I'm from Hanson. I've been in Hanson. Um, right now I currently live in a condo. So my initial plan was to, you know, granted this gets approved was to actually move in there and be a resident Halifax.
Yeah, but it was, the, the Pories, uh, have no problem with you representing them as, uh, for the purpose of, uh, you know, applying for the variances in, uh, in the special permit.
No, not at all. I actually, you, you guys should have a copy of the purchase and sale agreement, which is contingent on getting a permit.
That was my next question.
Correct. Yep.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, Charlie, we got anybody else that, uh, would like to make a comment or ask a question?
I, well, Amy still has her hand up. I don't know if she wants to speak more to this or if anybody else does. But that's the only one I see.
Amy? I do have another question. Yes. Um, is it in a flood zone over there? Thirty six, thirty three? Can you tell me if you pay flood insurance?
Mr. Perkins, I'll try to find out. Mr. Perkins, do you know if the Pories pay flood insurance if it's in the flood zone over there?
I don't believe, I don't believe so. Maybe Mr. Barrows could.
I was just going to say, maybe one of the other brothers who are attending would, would know that. Is, is Mr. Barrows still on? I could, I could ask.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, no. Thank, thankfully, thankfully, we do not pay flood insurance.
Do you have a mortgage or is it just that you don't pay?
Ms. Troop, could you just?
Well, it's, it's an important question because if it's in a flood zone.
You have to follow protocol, Amy, like everybody else does. It goes through the chair. I'll, I'll try to find out before you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Barrows, the, the answer to the question is you were not in the flood zone and you did not have to pay flood insurance.
That's correct. So yeah, I have a mortgage on it. Yep.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Then, uh, what is it the pleasure of the board? Uh, Charlie, if you don't have any other one there, uh, uh, what is the pleasure of the board? We're, we're going to be doing site inspections on, on, uh, Saturday, May first. We could put this in afterwards if, if it's the pleasure of the board to go take a look at it.
Mr. Chair, if I could, the applicant, Kevin Perkins?
Yes, sir.
Um, a- at this point in time, I, I'd like to request that the board would consider waiving the site visit, just that um, with the picture supplied to you and that the property is vacant, um, it's really, my opinion, kind of a, you know, irrelevant. Um, I think you, you can kind of see you have enough information in front of you to hopefully make a strong decision on this. And that as proposed, it's, it's not going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Well, I'll, uh, at your request, I'll ask the members, uh, how they feel about that. How's that? Uh, Charlie, can you take the, the plot plan down through so we could see the other members?
Yeah. There we go.
Gentlemen, how do you, uh, feel about, uh, the need for a site plan, a site inspection or, uh, of, of what you're feeling? Is it, is it needed, required, or anybody?
I'm familiar with the area, so I'm, I'm good.
You're familiar with it?
I think I've seen enough.
Uh, Kasiah?
Uh, I don't think it's required.
I'm sorry?
I don't think it's required to have a site inspection.
All right, Jerry?
I'm fine with it.
I'm, uh, Dan, how about you? Are you familiar with the area down there?
Um, uh, uh, not too much, but if the other board members are familiar with it, I mean, I'm okay with it.
Uh, especially after, uh, seeing the, uh, the picture that was provided. Uh, I do recall the structure myself. So if, if, uh, well, that's our choice, gentlemen. Either we do a site inspection next Saturday or I'll entertain a motion if, uh, somebody wants to make the motion to waive the onsite.
I want to make a motion to waive the onsite?
Talking.
Okay. So there's a, a motion and a second, uh, to waive the onsite. Uh, I'll ask for a voice vote. Uh, Kasiah?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Dan?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, passes unanimously to, uh, waive the onsite inspection. Uh, gentlemen, let me ask you this, uh, is there anything, uh, during the discussion that, uh, anyone feels we need a condition or anything like that set on the property or everybody, uh, happy with, uh, what's being presented in front of us? No conditions, nothing?
I, I think central to this is the fact that, that there's thirty five feet wide and there's, there's eighty feet long. And the setbacks would make it a, a, a five foot wide building if he was supposed to, to fix up that building or stay in that footprint of that building. So if we want, if we want improvement, um, a lot of thought went into this and it's very clear. So.
All right. I agree. I think also, uh, as far as the conditions, I, I do see the hardship in the topography and the layout of the property being twenty eight hundred square feet. Uh, knowing the area down there and being down there, we're actually quite familiar with it. I, uh, I do not think it would be detrimental to the established character of the neighborhood. In fact, I think it would only improve and, and help property values down there. And I don't believe the, uh, variances and special permit would derogate from the intent of the bylaw. That's my own personal. Unless somebody else feels different or would like to address anything else. Okay, then I'll ask for a, uh, motion, uh, regarding, uh, petition number nine thirty four.
I'll make a motion to accept nine thirty four as presented.
You have a second? Okay, I have a motion on the, on the floor in a second to accept petition number nine thirty four as presented. I'll call for voice vote. Uh, please, uh, all those in favor say aye. Kasiah?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Also, Dan, your opinion? Okay, the motion passes five zero to zero. Uh, Mr. Perkins, uh, you can give, uh, Alana uh, at the zoning board a, a call tomorrow and, uh, they'd be able, she'll be able to guide you through the process of what they need to do and all that other. All right, Mr. Perkins, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and the rest of the members. Have a good night.
Yep, bye bye now. Bert? Yes?
Um, one recommendation came in about petition nine thirty three. While you did vote to continue the hearing to May third, you didn't set a time. I know you instructed Alana to do that, but it may be more prudent to get a time set specifically um, in terms of being on the record so that participants for that hearing would know now rather than at some later point when the hearing would be continued to. I know, you know, Alana may be able to tell you if there's anything right now on the agenda for May third. If not, you might want to start off with that first as first hearing of the night.
Well, uh, Alana, uh, how we looking as far as the, uh, schedule goes for, uh, May third?
Sorry, just looking right now. Um, it looks like we have three petition, new, um, petitions. And that's without any, oh, I'm sorry, four because of the continuation of, um, Casa Grande.
So you may want to, you have a time set for the Casa Grande one at this point, either to put it in front of the first three, um, the new ones or simply arbitrarily pick a time.
Uh, Alana, why don't we, uh, put them, uh, did you give the others times already? I'm sorry, the, the new ones?
Nothing, nothing set in stone.
Okay, let's do, uh, let's do, uh, Mr., uh, uh, Casa Grande and, and Mr. Perkins first. Or at least at the beginning, how about like, uh, seven, ten or seven fifteen?
Uh, Mr. Perkins was approved, so he won't be on it.
Oh, yeah, my bad. Uh, sure, Mr. Casa Grande there.
Seven oh five, um, for Scott Casa Grande?
Yeah, sure. Let's make it seven. All right. Good. Moving on. Uh, petition number nine thirty five, Mr. Michael Fosseka. Mr. Fosseka, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me just read this into the, into the minutes. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April twelfth, two thousand twenty one at seven forty five PM via Zoom on the application by Michael Fosseka for a special permit to renovate an existing single family dwelling located at two thirty nine Oak Street, Halifax, Mass. O two three three eight. Said property is owned by Seaport Investments of two ninety three Philadelphia Pike, number five, six, five, six, Claymont, Delaware, one, nine, seven, oh, three, as shown on assessors map twelve, lot ten. Title reference book five, three, five, four, six, page one eighty five. The applicant is seeking a special permit to renovate an existing single family dwelling, which would constitute a continuation of a non-conforming use and an alteration of a non-conforming use in accordance with the, uh, town of Halifax zoning bylaws. Section one sixty seven, eight A and eight B. Area is zoned residential petition number nine thirty five. Okay, Mr. Fonsika, would you like to speak to your petition, please?
Yes, basically we're just looking to bring it back to its original state and then, uh, a burden on the owners as well as the neighborhood. They've been sitting on this for seven months with no fault of their own, who was hired previously. And, um, got the building to its current state. And I'm looking to rectify the situation and bring it back to its, uh, original state with newer codes. And I had met with Mr. Piccarelli a few times on this site and gone over what we are doing. And, um, basically we want to get it back on track, fit in with the neighborhood, change absolutely no footprint, no alterations. As is just install new windows, vinyl roof and bring it all up to satisfaction of the building department and the town of Halifax. And get rid of the, I saw that it is sitting there with the neighborhood.
Okay, uh, why was there a cease and desist issued or was there?
Yeah, that was before I was hired to rectify situation. Whoever was working on it before, I guess they didn't meet with Mr. Piccarelli or didn't present what they wanted to do with it and had taken it too far. So I want to bring it back. So it fits in the neighborhood and make it beautiful and satisfied, um, any concerns Mr. Piccarelli has in the town of Halifax.
So then, Mr. Fosseka, you're not changing any setbacks, side setbacks, rear setbacks?
Correct. As is, just bring the structure, continue as non-conforming structure and totally renovate it. New and make it look beautiful and fit in the neighborhood.
Okay, I'm looking at, uh, it's right at the corner of, uh, Home Street and Oak Street. Uh, it shows lot number three, one acre plus six thousand three hundred and fifty square feet, plus or minus two hundred and eighty nine feet of frontage on Oak Street and three hundred and forty three feet of frontage on Home Street. Uh, so no increase in, in the footprint, no increase to the, uh, to the non-conformity, to the non, uh, conformity of this front, well, actually that would be a front setback from the garage. The garage is going to remain the same?
Yes, sir, as is.
Gentlemen, any questions? Open them up to Mr. Fosseka here. Kasiah, Bob, Peter, Dan, or Jerry?
We have pictures somewhere of this. I'm, I'm looking.
Yeah, the previous contractor was hired and they were under the assumption, the owners, that they were going to pull permits to do everything there and they didn't. That's how it came of the stop work order. Before I even went on the property, I went to the town and the building department and spoke to Mr. Piccarelli and that's when I found out the situation. So I told them I would work with him and the town to get it back on track and make it beautiful again and fit in the neighborhood. And, um, do whatever is necessary to satisfy him, town and the neighbors.
This is just a renovation of an existing building?
Correct, sir.
Are you renovating the garage also, Mr. Fosseka?
No, not in the plans. Just the house, make it beautiful again. They've been sitting on this for seven months and, uh, not only is it nice off a neighborhood, we also, you know, financial loss and we just want to get it on track and move forward. As I have met with Mr. Piccarelli a few times onsite and at the office and went over what we want to do. And because of the stop work order before me, we had to go this route and ask the town for your help and your approval so we can continue and get it back on track and make it beautiful again.
So, uh, just so I, I've got the right, this was the former fire chief's house, is that right?
I am not aware, sir.
Bert, yes, it is.
Yes, it is. Uh, Calvin, I couldn't think of his name. I was lost. Uh, Mr. Fosseka, is the shed staying out back there, which was, uh, close to the, uh, well, you have an, an area listed here as a wetlands at, uh, two thirty nine Oak Street. Is it wet back there? Is there a pond back there or?
I believe there is a small pond. I'm not totally sure. And Dana didn't mention anything about the shed or Mr. Piccarelli. Well, if we need to address it, we will. But we are not concerned with getting the structures as they're all existing and as the building has been sitting there for a hundred years. We just want to bring it back to, uh, its original state and fit in and make it beautiful with the neighborhood.
Gentlemen, any questions? I, I don't see if he's not changing the non-conformity and, uh, remaining the same footprint. Basically, he's remodeling and doing just that. Uh, you know, it's not, uh, I don't see it as being detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. Right now it's got a blue top on the roof. The last time I went by, Dan, you're.
Yeah, I actually put the top to try to save the structure for, um, you know, the, the owners have been sitting on it and trying to, you know, resolve further issues with the building. So wanted to get it weathered tight. Mr. Piccarelli allowed me to do that and said after the next step, we'll be able to put a roof on it and start working on it with the town's help and approval.
Jerry, you all familiar with this? Bob?
I am. I'm, I'm all settled. He's really doing a good job. He's going to do a good job of what's going to happen there. Yeah.
Yeah. Kasiah, how about you?
I'm fine with it.
Uh, Bob, you, I have you muted, Bob, by the way. Mr. Durgan? Yeah, there you go.
I'm back, I'm back. No, I'm familiar. Um, I went on Google Maps and looked at it. I think it would definitely be an improvement and need some upgrades.
I think it could only be better, better the whole entire neighborhood.
Great.
All right. Well, uh, uh, Mr. Sealy, Charlie, we got anybody that wants to speak to this or anything that's indicated?
I don't see any here so far. I don't see any.
Mr. Fosseka, we're not changing the number of bedrooms or anything like that either or?
No, sir, two bedroom, one bath.
Okay, awesome.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. Thank you, Charlie. Uh, in which case, all right, let's go first. What about, uh, a site inspection? Uh, how do we feel, need to be done or does somebody want to waive it? It's pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to waive the onsite.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second to, uh, waive the onsite inspection. I'm going to call for roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Kasiah?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Myself, yes. Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes, uh, we waive the, uh, onsite, uh. Okay, uh, basically, Mr. Fonseca, that saved you thirty days. It's basically bottom line is what it did.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, uh, how about a motion, uh, for petition number nine thirty-five with, uh, conditions or we good or what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to accept petition nine thirty-five as presented.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second to, uh, approve the, uh, petition number, uh, nine thirty-five as presented. Uh, once again, a roll call vote, uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Casaya?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Pete, stop smirking, I saw that. Jerry?
Aye.
And Dan, your opinion?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Passes five zero to zero. Okay, uh, Mr. Fonseca, uh, again, uh, we got Alana back to work and she's at the helm down there in the office, so, uh, you could give her a call tomorrow and she will, uh, uh, take you through the process. How's that?
Will do, thank you very much, gentlemen, have a good night.
All right, thank you. Wow, we're flying now. All right, we're, Fonseca, we're only like two hours behind, right? Now, okay, uh, let's see, eight oh five, petition number nine thirty-six, uh, Ana Paula and Jose, I'm gonna butcher this, I'm sorry, uh, Tertuliano Filo from twelve White Island Road, a special permit for a roof overhang. Okay, uh, the Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April twelfth, two thousand twenty-one at eight oh five PM via Zoom on the application by Jose and Ana Paula Filo for a special permit and variance to build a roof overhang and deck located at twelve White Island Road Halifax, Mass. O two three three eight. Said property is owned by Jose and Ana Paula Filo of twelve White Island Road Halifax, Mass. O two three three eight, as shown on assessors map forty-two, lot forty-five, title reference book five one four five one, page two thirteen. The applicants are seeking a special permit to build a ten point eight foot by sixteen foot roof overhang and a ten foot by twenty foot deck on the property, which would constitute a continuation of a non-conforming use and an extension of a non-conforming use in accordance with the town of Halifax zoning bylaws, section one sixty-seven eight A and eight C. The project also requires a variance from the front setback from Montana Street from fifty feet to forty feet in accordance with the town of Halifax zoning bylaws, section one sixty-seven eleven, area zone residential petition number, uh, nine three six. Uh, and who will be speaking regarding this petition? Do we have Jose or Anna? Charlie, are they with us?
I don't see anything coming up.
Yikes.
Give them another minute, but unless someone's there, you're representing them. I don't see anybody on the list.
Anybody's.
If there's no one coming, wait, hold on, another person coming in. See if that's them. Um, I guess, you know, if no one is here, you might want to continue the hearing to May third and Alana can get in touch with them in the meantime and make sure they understand how, you know, they were doing Zoom meetings and that there are tenants is needed or they need to have somebody here representing them.
Okay, Alana, you haven't heard anything from the petition or anything, have you?
I have not, no, I sent them an email on Wednesday of last week, um, just to confirm she, uh, sent the agenda, but I didn't hear anything back.
Okay, well, we'll, uh, send them up, I'll, I'll let, or even better yet, a phone call to contact and to let them know if, uh, they'll need somebody to either represent them or, or show up themselves and we will, uh, reschedule them for, uh, our, um, May third hearing.
Bert, you'll need to, uh, just as with the, uh, petition nine three three, you're going to want to set a specific time for this.
All right, uh, Alana, how we looking? I want to stick you with that. What do we got?
Um, the only set time we have is that first seven oh five Scott Casa Grande, so I can put them however long you think that you need for.
What have we been going with? Half an hour?
Um, yeah, like fifteen, twenty, twenty-five minutes usually.
Yeah, let's go twenty-five minutes, uh.
Okay.
We'll, we'll set that up, notify them and, uh, I suppose, uh, do we need to have a motion to, uh? Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll need, uh, a motion and a second to, uh, continue the, uh, petition number.
Nine thirty-six.
Nine thirty-six to, uh, May third at, uh, what are we talking? Seven thirty?
Sure.
Uh, does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Till seven thirty?
I'm going to make a motion to, oh, sorry. I'll make a motion to continue petition nine thirty-six until May third at eight thirty PM?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, seven thirty PM, sorry.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to, uh, continue the hearing, uh, for, uh, petition number nine thirty-six until May third at, uh, two thousand twenty-one, uh, at the next zoning board hearing at seven thirty. And, uh, you'll notify them, right? Alana will be all set with that.
I will, I'll attempt it.
Okay, thank you so much.
You've done the roll call on that, right?
I'm sorry?
You've done the roll call on that?
Oh, I didn't do the roll call, my bad. Casaya, roll call vote?
Yes.
Uh, Robert?
Yes.
Uh, Pete?
Yes.
Uh, Jerry?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Dan, your opinion, please?
Yes.
Passes five zero to zero. Good thing someone's watching me, jeez. That's right over there. Uh, okay. Let's see, uh, eight twenty-five hearing, petition number nine thirty-seven. Um, Mr., Mr. Rick and Holly Mary of three oh one Home Street, are they with us?
Yes.
Yes, we're here.
All right, uh, the Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April twelfth, two thousand twenty-one at eight twenty-five PM via Zoom on the application by Richard and Holly Mary for a special permit to build an addition for an in-law apartment located at three oh one Home Street Halifax, Mass. O two three three eight. Said property is owned by Richard E. and Holly J. Mary of three oh one Home Street Halifax, Mass. O two three three eight, as shown on assessors map twenty-two, lot one oh two, title reference book four six zero five one, page fourteen. The applicants are seeking a special permit to construct a thirty by twenty-nine point five foot addition to allow for an in-law apartment in accordance with the town of Halifax zoning bylaws, section one sixty-seven seven, area zone residential petition number nine thirty-seven. Mr. and Mrs. Mary, how we doing?
Just fine, I'm kind of past my bedtime now.
Hey, uh, Rick, Rich, you want to, uh, speak to this, uh, tell us, uh, I mean, uh, I know you're familiar with the, uh, with the bylaws. Could you explain what you want to build and, and, uh, and, and what you want to do here with the in-law?
Um, well, pretty much says it all, it's just an in-law apartment off the house. Our, uh, my daughter's family decided to move in, they sold their house, which they'd be closing this week. And they want to move in, in our house and put us in an in-law at the back door, so that's what we got.
Did you just say they want to kick you out the back doors?
Exactly, that's what's happened.
Okay, uh, let's see, uh, gentlemen, I'll, uh, open it up to the board. Uh, I, I know personally, uh, I'm, I'm very, I'm familiar with the, with the property. Uh, I've been out there a couple of times. Uh, I do know that, uh, just reviewing the, the criteria for, uh, for an in-law, I know it's a immediate family member. Uh, I know that, uh, according to, uh, the bylaw, what do we have, uh, twenty-five percent of the, uh, ground for living space or nine hundred square feet, whatever's.
Fifty percent.
I'm sorry, fifty?
Fifty, I think, right?
Yeah. Uh, and, uh, this being just under nine hundred complies with that. They, uh, I do know that, uh, you know, as far as, uh, sharing space and, and whatnot, I, I, I think it's pretty much spelt out on the floor plan and whatnot, but, uh, please, if, uh, members of the, of the board have any questions, I'll open it up. Gentlemen?
What is the, uh, shared living space?
Uh, the shared living space would be a dining room in the main house. Cause the, uh, department just doesn't have a dining area, it's just a kitchen.
How about utilities, uh, Rick? Are they, uh, uh, we, we need, um, a major utility. What do we got for, uh, shared utilities?
Yeah, electric, water, uh, septic, pretty much everything.
All right, we have a, uh, we have a, uh, shared, uh, entry exit, uh, for the, uh, entranceway to the access to the in-law?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Gentlemen, anybody else have any other questions?
There are open, there are going to be between them, that's going to be staying open?
Yes, be a three-foot case opening. So it's actually, it's a, it's a rear door on the, from the back of the house now, it's always been there.
There's supposed to be a foot opening.
Where does it say that in the?
Between the two apartments.
What's that?
There's supposed to be a six-foot opening between the, the two that, uh, live in the quarters.
No, that's nothing I've heard of, that's not, I, I.
I, when, when I went out there, the, uh, the setup, the, the doorway that going from the, uh, what would be the in-law into the, into the main house, there is a, uh, there is a, a staircase that's like right there, so with a load-bearing wall, uh, and seeing that basically bottom line, there's nothing in the building code, there's nothing in our zoning bylaw that, uh, requires a, a six-foot opening, other than conditions that we as a board have set up on, on occasion in the, in the past, you know, to prevent like what Casaya was saying and making it a, a, a two-family. Uh, they are very much limited to, uh, being able to expand that, that door from three feet to six feet without, without taking out a staircase to the second floor of the main house. It'd be, uh, next to one, impossible, actually.
And Mr. Chairman, could I, could I speak on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, the, the original house was a solar house, so it's the, the rear of the house where we're at is the north side of the house, so it was built where, uh, our entryway is right next to an existing bathroom, that was the rear door of the house, you had to have that for an egress. Then there's a stairway next to that and then another downstairs bedroom next to that. So, you know, even if I wanted to, I couldn't put, there's no way a six-foot opening would work here. And that's the only place I can really put, put the addition. I mean, I'd love to have it in a different spot, but that's the only place it'll fit with setbacks with, uh, utilities I have coming out, going out to my garage and pool and, um, and with the topo of the land, I couldn't have it come straight off the back of the house, uh, just for grading purposes. Like I said again, just the utilities, uh, that go out to my, uh, my other building. If you look at the site.
If you look at the pictures that were provided, you'll see the, uh, the drop off where, where, well, actually, there was a retaining wall there. The topography of the land doesn't allow the addition to be put, say, on side, to the side of the house where the pool does not exist because the septic system is there, the driveway is there and, and those painting, and the walls which were retaining wall was, was moved to, uh, accommodate, uh, the living space. I believe also in the file, there were two separate letters from, uh, two different abutters that, uh, I'm sorry, that, uh, have written saying that, uh, they have no objections to the, uh, you know, to the, to the proposal and it sits on. Mr. Mary, how big a lot is this? I mean, how many?
It's four, it's four point six three acres.
Four point six three. Okay, yeah, I think if you see the floor plan, you'll see the pool to the right-hand side and, and then that whole septic system to the left. So, yeah, pretty much limited. Uh, like I said, uh, I, I am familiar with it and I, I did go out and see, you know, with the plan, uh, to check it out, but any other questions, uh, from any other members of the board?
So the opening goes from the kitchen into the rest of the house?
Um.
Just trying to look at it.
On the, on the addition, yes, the kitchen.
Right.
Yeah. It's like that's.
And then there's an, uh, an exterior door to the, to the right there, where there's like a deck or something?
Yeah, there's a four-foot walkway, four-foot deck that goes down the side of the house there. See, the house, the house doesn't actually face the front lot line, it faces the railroad tracks. Cause like I said, it was, it was a solar house built to face south. So that's how it's turned like that. So, um, we're coming off the back of the house, but that's a sideline. So if anybody's confused about that, I'm meeting the thirty-foot setback on the sideline.
Charlie, can you put up the, uh, the plot plan on this, please, or is it requested?
Give me a minute here.
Sure, if you throw that up on screen, uh, Mr. Andrew's requested, I'd throw it up there so everybody can see what we're, uh, talking about here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Dan?
Um, so we're, we're under fifty percent of the first floor of living space?
Yes, uh, no. On the fifty percent, we're, we're at the nine hundred square foot maximum, I believe.
So which? Nine hundred, just under nine hundred, okay, yes, that's correct.
Cause it says fifty percent or nine.
Whichever is greater, correct.
Right. Jerry, you good? You need, uh?
I'm good, looks good, yep.
Casaya? Robert?
I'm good.
Yeah, where it does sit on, uh, four point six three acres, it does, uh, in walking out there, I don't know, it seems more than like three quarters of the, uh, the, uh, plot plan itself is woods or, uh, or the space between the pool and he does have a, a detached garage out back, but it does sit on four point six three. And you could see where it says Massachusetts Bay Transit, the, the railroad tracks are right there, so, uh, pretty much the only, uh, butter you have there in the back is the thirty point five feet from, uh, rear setback and there is a, uh, letter in the file from the butter, uh, agreeing with the proposed addition. Dan, is that good or did you want to see something else?
That wasn't me, no, I just was asking.
Charlie, is there, uh, anybody else that'd like to speak on this? I have any questions, I'll open it up.
See? I don't see anybody at this point. I'm going to take the screen sharing off, it helps. I do not see any hands and I don't see any comments, I believe. Let's make sure, that's it, nope.
If, uh, nobody else had, uh, any other, uh, objections, uh, I'd like, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, waive the onsite or I need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to waive the onsite.
Second.
Okay, there's a, uh, motion and a second to, uh, waive the onsite. I'm going to call for a voice vote, all those in favor, please say aye. Casaya?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Myself, yes, and Dan?
Yes.
Okay, the, uh, motion passes to waive the onsite five zero to zero. Okay, uh, gentlemen, unless there are any other conditions or anything else, uh, on there, uh, I'll accept, uh, entertain a motion regarding petition number nine thirty-seven.
Make a motion to accept nine thirty-seven as presented.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to accept petition number nine thirty-seven as presented. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye, I'll go to a voice vote. Casaya?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Peter?
Yes, aye.
Uh, Jerry?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Dan?
Yes.
Great, motion, uh, carries, it, this is approved. Uh, Rick and, uh, Mary, I think you can, uh, give, I mean, sorry, you could give, uh, Alana a, uh, call tomorrow and she can, uh, walk you through the process and, uh, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All righty, see ya. Okay, where are we? We are at eight forty-five PM, really, that's funny. Petition number, uh, nine thirty-one. Uh, Robert D'Agostino, five ninety-six one Ponset Street, special permit and variance for a single family dwelling. Oh, you doing that, uh, Mr.?
Yes, we are. Yes, great, thank you, and I have attorney Ron Whitney with me, in case we need to document anything, he can do it and answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Good, good evening, uh, Charlie, is, uh, Amy?
She's there, I see her right there, hi, Amy.
Wait a minute, I gotta see Amy, I haven't seen her yet. There she is, Amy, how are you? Oh, you're muted.
I'm fine, how are you, Mr. Chairman?
Good, good, okay, uh, I guess at our last hearing, Amy, just to I bring you up to date a little bit, we had, uh, several questions that, uh, uh, we were inquisitive about and that were brought up at our last meeting, and you had answered us in, uh, like to go through them with you and, uh, you know, hear your opinion, so kind of explain it to everybody, uh, well, one of the first ones, I'm not going in any kind of order, Amy, if, if you, if you would rather go in order, that, that's.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
Uh, the first one was, uh, we were kind of, uh, questioning the fact that because there were two separate lots, one grandfathered and one that was non-grandfathered, the septic system sitting on the vacant lot, which is from, uh, my understanding was currently under a, a purchase and sale, but is not owned by the applicant. I think I have that right.
Oh, you know, the, the one with the septic system on it, I already own that. And the one, the one with the theater on it is the one under agreement.
Okay, so, uh, Amy, how, how is that gonna affect us? Uh, the, the lot, first of all, the lot with the, with the theater sitting on it. Uh, they are not increasing the non-conformity, in fact, they're, they're building on the current, what, what is the current foundation, so they're not going any closer or any further behind, and, and how would the fact that if and when they, they do purchase the, the vacant lot, there was a question arose of, I believe it was Mr. Andrews, rose that if it was combined, would therefore they be required to meet current zoning?
So, um, so, no, they, no, um, so first of all, um, the fact that the septic system is on a separate lot um, is definitely an issue, however, it's not an issue for this board. It's an issue for, um, the Board of Health, so this board can grant relief, um, in fact, I question, I, I, I think the building inspector could probably even grant a building permit, but when it comes to an occupancy permit, they cannot live there, that, that septic system um, cannot be on a separate lot according to Title V, however, the Board of Health, um, they have jurisdiction over Title V, so, um, if the septic system is going to be on a separate lot, they have two options, they either purchase the lot in the same name, or they get a variance from the Board of Health, so we, we should just put the septic system aside, um, with regard to merging of the lots, the merger doctrine is a doctrine with regard to the zoning, with regard to zoning, and so if a non-conforming lot is owned by an adjacent non-conforming lot, or even conforming lot, um, they will, they, they merge for zoning purposes, because the purpose of zoning is to make lots more conforming. And so if he purchases the lot in, in the same name, um, the two lots will merge, however, that does not change the fact that he is seeking to, um, alter a pre-existing non-conforming structure, so he is create, he is proposing to build a single family house on an existing, um, foundation, and, um, what I would suggest is until the, the lots are purchased, um, in the same name, that you treat them separately, um, because that is exactly what they are right now, so while I think that having a purchase and sale gives him, there is an intent that he will be merging these, um, until he does, we should not consider them merged, and so right now, we're looking at an undersized lot, we're looking at lack of frontage, um, but more importantly, we're looking at an existing, pre-existing non-conforming structure on that property, he is going to build a structure on that foundation, so he's not necessarily, um, he's not enlarging the pre-existing non-conforming structure, he's simply just altering the pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Okay, again, uh, Amy, as far as the use goes, the fact that it's a, uh, it is a commercial structure currently, although he's not increasing the non-conformity, the use would be changing from a business to, or, or commercial to a residential, could, could you address that?
Right, which is, which is, um, from, from a zoning context, that's per, that's perfectly fine, because the use is allowed. So, um, a, a single family dwelling is allowed in that zoning district, so there is no, um, there is no non-conforming use right now, and there will be no non-conforming use right now, so it's a conforming use right now, um, switching to a se, to a different conforming use, so there, there is no, that, that doesn't have any implication with regard to, uh, special permits or non-conforming, that's an as of, it's an as of right use.
Okay, uh, gentlemen from the board, uh, any other questions of, uh, to Amy, as we had gone through on our last meeting and, and, uh, at the onsite and whatnot? Was there, was there any other items or areas that, uh, posed some confusion? Or that you needed answer to? Pete, I, you know, we went round and round, or?
You did, it was, it was more in the comments, I think, than anything else, it, it seems, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this again, and I'm seeing the same stuff, so it's, it's, it's pre-existing, and he's staying within the foundation, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's how it is, they're not increasing the non-conformity.
And the other thing that's, that's, that's important is the fact that, um, the, um, the foundation is considered a structure under your bylaw.
Oh, uh, what about the, uh, Amy, what about the alterations, uh, the fifty percent there, I know that was a question that was being, uh, risen or arose also.
So, so the way that your bylaw is written, it appears that, um, if you have a non, a pre-existing non-conforming structure, you can never do anything that is, um, more than fifty percent. And so if you look at the statute, the statute specifically states that pre-existing non-conforming structures are allowed to, uh, be, you know, altered, et cetera, per, per the bylaw. So, it's my understanding that the building inspector has, um, numerous times in the past, and, and it's, it's, it's his practice to interpret that as the fact that if they want to increase it more than fifty percent, they need a special permit from this board. Uh, less than fifty percent, the building inspector can issue a building permit. Um, that is a very reasonable way to interpret the bylaw, um, it's, it's, I, I, I'm, I'm going to admit, it's not, it's not specifically stated in the bylaw. Um, however, I, I also think that it's not, if it's not specifically stated in the bylaw, um, their only option at this point would be to get variances from, you know, from the setback requirements, and if we look at that law, they most likely could, um, and, and this is, this is one hundred percent up to you, um, but in my opinion, they could probably qualify for a variance, they have a lot that's a, that's a unique, um, it's a unique shape, it has the topography going down into, um, into the pond, and the hardship is that they're, they're staying on the exact same footprint. Um, so, so they're not increasing any non-conformities by staying on that same footprint, that is their hardship. Um, so again, i- in my opinion, there's possibly two forms of relief in this instance, the first is the relief that, um, that the fact that the bylaw, the, um, building inspector has interpreted the bylaw a certain way um, with regard, that requires a special permit, if you go over fifty percent, or um, a, a variance from the setbacks because of the fact that they're staying within the same footprint.
All right, Amy, as long as I have you here, uh, there, there was another question being arose too, now, the, the commercial structure that was on the, pre-existing on the property, al- although the, the foundation still remains there a hundred percent, which is what the footprint is there on the new structure is gonna be built, there is a, a, a portion of the building that's the front, I don't know, call it maybe twenty percent, fifteen percent. The whole entire structure, uh, wasn't taken down, it's, in fact, it's still there, there's still, uh, water to the, uh, the building, is, does that, uh, affect anything as far as, uh, the, uh, you know, conforming to the bylaws or, or whatever as far as the alter, alterations or conditions?
No, so under your bylaw, it does not, because the fact that, um, the, the, um, the foundation is a structure, so if your definition of structure was different, th- then that would come into play, but the fact that your definition of structure includes foundations, that, then that struck, that is still a structure, it's still there. So, wh- whether, whether pieces of it have come down, but the foundation has remained, doesn't necessarily matter in this instance.
Uh, there was another question too, brought up, Amy, there, some type of deed restrictions that have, uh, applied, uh, I, I didn't know of any deed restrictions that, that were involved with this particular property, uh, the vacant lot, or the one that's being, that has the structure on it, would, would that affect, uh, anything at all in, in the determination of the, of the permits or or variances?
No, no, that would not, um, if, if there is a, um, if there is a deed restriction, whoever holds that restriction will not allow the building to be built.
Oh, okay, and, but as far as I know, the, there.
We, the town, as far as I know, the town of Halifax does not hold the deed restriction.
All right, Amy, let me ask you, point, for your recommendation, then, would you suggest that we do the variances on, on the, uh, on the setbacks, on, on the on the theater or, or on the, uh, on the, where the structure's going, or?
So, so in, you know, i- it, you know, in, in typical lawyer fashion, I'm gonna punt on that one, and, um, I'm gonna let the applicants and, uh, the applicant and his attorney decide what they, you know, what they feel is the safest, um, or the best, um, relief to, to get, um, and ask for that, um, so that would, that would definitely be up to them. I mean, I think the risk that they face is that, um, you know, variances are, are hard to come by, um, they have to prove the, um, you know, they have to prove the fact that they meet the requirements for a variance, so you know, soil shape, topography, is that unique, um, and then is there a hardship based on the soil shape, topography? So, um, so that would be up to them.
Okay, gentlemen, any other questions, uh, of, uh, Amy, or anything that you guys, uh, would like to have cleared up, or of the applicant for that matter?
I had a question about the variance on the, um, the left side, the three feet. Um, if the lot is purchased, you no longer need that variance, so does the variance go away? What happens with that variance?
No, the variance stays, so, so the doctrine of merger is a, it's a doctrine. Um, it does not mean that the lots automatically merge, so for example, if, if, if the lots were to officially merge, they would have to go before the planning board for an A and R process, or they would have to have an eighty-one X plan filed at the registry, so it's, it's really just a, um, it, it's just a doctrine where what's gonna happen is once that lot, once that empty lot merges with the lot that has the theater on it, then that, that empty lot cannot be built upon, because those lots have merged.
Okay, so we can't take that three feet and kind of put it on that other, other lot, then?
He can't right now, because right now, he does not, oh, he does not own the lot that the theater's on, so the lots have to be um, in the same name for us to be, for us to start considering setbacks.
Well, what I'm trying to say, i- if he gets a three foot variance on the theater lot,
Yes.
was the other lot, he can't take that three feet and kind of put it on his lot once.
Oh goodness, no, no, I'm sorry, no, it's based on the lot, it's based on that lot, like I said, the lots don't, the actual lots, um, the configuration of those lots do not change at the registry or at the planning board anywhere, it's just a doctrine of merger, meaning that um, the building inspector, when he comes in and tries to put a house on the empty lot where the septic system is, as another house, a second house, the building inspector's gonna say, no way, get out, because these two lots have merged.
Understand.
The zoning purpose only.
So for right now? Well, why, why don't we clear that up from, unless, Kasai, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you? Did you need, did you have something?
Saying that those lots right now stand alone, we have to vote.
Exactly. Exactly, the lots stand alone, and so the, if, if, for example, they do request a variance, or even the special permit, that, that special permit will be based upon the, that lot that the theater's on.
Right.
The, the lot that the septic is on, we're not even considering that, because those lots have not merged right now. Um, and that's, the, that's the Board of Health issue with regard to the septic being on a separate lot.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the act, looking if I may.
Does, uh, anybody else, uh, Dan or Pete, do you have any other questions, Jerry?
No.
Okay, Mike, well, why don't we solve that from right from the beginning, uh, is the name, uh, 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 Mr. Whitney, is the name gonna be the same on both lots?
Yes, most certainly, and my client is well aware of the doctrine of merger, and this plan is presented as one plan, not two plans. It, it, the two lots, and if the board were to make a condition of their approval that both lots be held in common ownership, such that they merge for zoning purposes, and for purposes of approving this project, my clients would certainly be willing to accept such a condition. Um, what we have here is a non-conforming.
Hold on one second, Mr. Whitney, Amy, what, is, is that feasible, Amy?
I, I, unfortunately, it's not, in my opinion, because, um, you, you, first of all, you can never, um, i- if we go the variance route, you can never, um, condition a variance on ownership. Um, and then I, I question whether we could do that with a special permit either, um, I, I know that there are, um, you know, for example, there's the Lincoln case where you can, um, condition a special permit on continued ownership for three years, but, um, that was a different, that was a completely different fact, said it was a large, large solar project, um, I, I don't think that, I wouldn't recommend conditioning a special permit on ownership either, much less ownership that hasn't even happened yet, so, so you would be conditioning your approval on an act that has to happen in the future, that quite honestly, is not within the town's, it's not within your control. W- we don't know this, we don't know if the seller is going to follow through, we can't guarantee that, so I don't think I would ever recommend that. And I understand them offering it, and I, I understand the offer, and I, and I think that shows good faith, but unfortunately, I, I wouldn't, um, recommend any kind of condition.
May I suggest, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that what we have is a non-conforming lot with a non-conforming structure and a non-conforming use that has not been abandoned. I would suggest that without any, uh, variances for setbacks, that the applicant could, if he wished, go back and rebuild on the footprint that existed by right. And so I'm not sure that variances are necessary, that much being said, I think this law um, much different than mo- many cases that come before your board, would qualify for a variance. If you look at the distance from Mon Ponset Street to the pond, it's exactly a hundred and two feet. Your front setback is, I believe, fifty feet, uh, let me just see here, your front setback is fifty feet, your rear setback is forty feet, that leaves exactly twelve feet to build a building. So, there would be, based on the shape of the lot, I would suggest, a perfect case to show a hardship, financial or otherwise, that's related to the shape, topography, or soil conditions on this lot. That much being said, I would again say that the applicant and perhaps town council would disagree with me, but you have an existing non-conforming structure that has not been abandoned, and there would be no reason why the applicant couldn't go to the outer boundaries of the foundation and rebuild the existing structure, we've already said that the front structure that is above the ground is in fact there, it's pre-existing, and it hasn't been abandoned, and it's non-conforming, and we've spoken about.
But I don't think anybody agreed with you on that, I think we, we were all in, in agreement that it's a. Buddy, I don't think anybody agreed with you on that. I think we were all in in agreement that it's a preexisting, nonconforming lot, and he's going to build on the on the or rebuild on the on the existing footprint.
Yeah, in every dimension, he's going to improve. He's going to come back off of Mont Ponce. He's going to come back off the pond. He's going to buy that lot next door, and there'll be no need for a side setback. So I'm not sure, Town Council, I'd ask you how we would proceed. I understand I have not been here at previous two meetings, but I understand that this is the third meeting and that this is the one hundredth day since the submittal of the petition. So we have to ask for an extension in order to put both lots in common ownership. It is clearly the intention of my clients to do so. They understand that that is vital for the approval. They do have Board of Health approval already. They have conservation approval already. And it's just a matter, I think now from what I'm hearing, it might just be a matter of how we mechanically get this done. But I'm certainly willing to listen to Town Council and let's listen to our board members.
Amy, how would you suggest we move forward on this then?
So I am a little concerned to hear that you have Board of Health approval because three ten C M R fifteen two one one. The footnote five states that locating a system component or any part thereof beyond a property line of the facility, whether pursuant to an easement or otherwise, requires a variance issued in accordance with three ten C M R fifteen point four one zero. So I'm assuming that you you have received a variance from the Board of Health for a setback?
No, no.
And they understood, I think the Board of Health, maybe understood that these two lots were going to be merged. That's what the what the suggestion was by Mr. Dacastino to the Board of Health.
So what 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 the Health approved? Did they, what did they approve then? They approved the design of the septic system? Is that what they approved?
They just they approved the septic system for that house plan that we have on this plan here. And 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 knowing that I had a purchase and sales agreement on the on the on the
Sorry, that was my fault.
Knowing that I had a purchase and sales agreement, so we put the plan together. It's a it's a it's a plan. It's a plan all as one piece of property.
It it is, but but as as Land Use Council for the for the town of Halifax, it it does not meet total five requirements. And so so I I'm not sure that saying that the Board of Health approved it is is one is is your is your best argument. So in fact, the from a zoning standpoint, I think that the fact that the properties are in separate ownership benefits the applicant because we have one property with a structure on it, a preexisting, nonconforming structure, where they are simply replacing the everything from the foundation up. They are altering that preexisting, nonconforming structure on the same footprint. So if you think of it in a in a way where, you know, are they increasing any of the nonconformities? They are not. Not one nonconformity will be increased because, you know, lot coverage, you know, everything, nothing will be increased when it comes to a nonconformity. And so therefore, you know, the the special permit, the 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 way that the building inspector is interpreting the bylaw seems seems to be the most reasonable way to interpret the bylaw, you know, and and again, as I as I said previously, the bylaw doesn't specifically state that, you know, a special permit is 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 the way to go here, but that is the most reasonable way to interpret the bylaw when it's silent. And so so I I I do think it could go either way. And again, like I said, I I do think that I do think that there's quite a quite an argument to be made for a variance. And Attorney Whitney had had just made an excellent point, which is that, you know, you you would be stuck with a twelve foot wide structure if you were going to meet both setbacks, front and front and rear. And that doesn't even, he he didn't even get into the side setback, so.
So Amy, if if I understand this correctly, then if we grant a special permit to rebuild the the new structure on the existing footprint, basically, bottom line, no occupancy permit could be given to the house until the second vacant lot was merged and then either a variance was given to the applicant by the Board of Health or they would solve that whole remedy by combining the both lots under one ownership.
Correct. So this is, this is that you, the board, you guys might remember this. This is from the Country Club. We had the same issue where the only difference was at the Country Club, they were claiming that an easement was adequate to place the septic system, or actually, it wasn't, it was components of the system on a separate property with an easement. And and I I offered the same opinion, which is that an easement doesn't count. It has to either be that the property has to be in the same ownership or there has to be a variance. So 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 yes, I mean, but but again, again, that's not up, that's not up to this board. That that is one hundred percent in the jurisdiction of the Board of Health, in my opinion.
And Mr. Chairman, through you to Town Council, do I understand then, Amy, that you would be comfortable with the board approving the project on the single lot subject to the Board of Health's later approval? Is that what we're saying?
No, no, I'm I'm not saying that at all. Actually, what I'm saying, I'm only looking at this project on the one lot that this project came in under. So I'm not looking at a septic system. I don't know how, I I would, I would, I would say that this this board, I I I don't, actually, I don't know, but but do you guys always look at where the septic system is when you're looking at a zoning, a setback issue? I mean, only if the septic system, only if the setback is a creation of where the septic system is located. But, you know, if you have a, for example, on the the previous, the previous application, we saw there was a pool, we saw there was a detached garage. I'm not really sure we saw where the septic system was because that's not under our purview as a zoning Board of Appeals. So I'm looking at the one lot that has a preexisting, nonconforming structure on it and what the proposal is. And the proposal is to replace the upper part of that structure, everything above the foundation with to alter it and make it into a single family dwelling, which is allowed under zoning. And so that's that's all I'm looking at. I'm not even looking at that separate lot because that separate lot is not part of this application.
Right. I think the the direction that the the board had discussed in the in the previous hearings, Amy also, was just that, just the lot itself, you know, where the theater is, where the where the structure is going in and of itself could exist without the vacant lot and the septic system. There is a a tight tank system there and and whatnot that could exist. Most, and and gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong, members of the board, it basically what we were discussing, it was the fact that it certainly would not be detrimental to the established character of the neighborhood, especially for what we're working with that's existing there now. It's within the purview of of the of the board, you know, to we all agreed that the usage was not a was not a problem also. We were looking to improve the neighborhood, did not think it derogated from the intent of the bylaw. And and the hardship itself, you know, is as far as the topography, the size of just the lot now where where the theater is, you know, we Town Council resolving the matter of, you know, if and when down the road it was combined, you know, would it have to fall under the preview of of the current zoning or setback requirements? And I think we resolved that. So I don't know, what's the feeling of the board? I I think we could move forward on this. Vote on 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 what we have in front of us now, which is, well, Mr. Whitney pretty much described it to a T there, preexisting, nonconforming use. We're not increasing the nonconformity. We're using the same footprint. And again, in to certainly take the advice of Town Council, we don't want, as a board, we have, not that we don't want to, I don't think we have a right to be able to even determine the use of of the vacant lot with the septic system on, you know, that's beyond our purview. Any variance on that has, as you mentioned, has to come from the Board of Health, has to be under the same ownership, which again, doesn't look like it's a big problem. But nevertheless, it's beyond the scope of our of right here as the zoning Board of Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask just quickly, the board in its deliberation, if it would consider granting a special permit pursuant to one sixty seven eight B firstly, and secondly, although I think it may be overkill if the board would consider granting the front, ten, rear, and side setback variances. I think the applicant makes a good case for them. Quite honestly, as I mentioned earlier, I I would think that there's a very legitimate argument that the applicant could go forward and rebuild not that footprint that exists there. But notwithstanding that, a safer course of action, I would suggest for the applicant, and I hope the board would agree, to grant the front, the rear, and the side setbacks with a special permit with one under section one sixty seven eight B.
Amy, isn't that what's in front of us now on just this very lot, on just this application?
So right now, in front of you right now is a special permit. So it appears that Attorney Whitney is asking you to do both, a special permit and a variance. However, I I I don't think you can do both. You can either do a special permit or you can do variances.
The variance and the special permit were requested in the petition.
We we had, we had talked about this in the last meeting. The issues in the last meeting, we were kind of dragged away from the the real questions. We were worrying whether a foundation was a structure and we needed some clarity on that stuff. It seemed pretty clear, the I thought so the last, the foundation is a structure. We talked about how the variances, there there's a hardship out there that that could be the case to grant those variances. My, the issue I have with Rob a little bit was that we had the power to just issue a special permit to to allow somebody to alter a nonconforming use at greater than fifty percent of the value of the structure. I don't know if we have the power to just go ahead and do that. There's also the 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 section D, which they didn't apply for, which is about restoration, which I don't know if this is fifty percent of the original area, but that's out there too. I I I think just on the the original lot and the variances alone, it it makes that case. And if we're going to argue, and I don't know if Rob's case is that under the the one sixty seven twenty one, which just outlines what the rules of special permits are, that we have the ability to kind of grant these special permits. And if that's the case, then then we can definitely do it. I also think I I think they have the right, I think they have a hardship for variances. But I've thought that kind of all along. So I think there's a way to do this either way, but it's, I, yeah.
I I think that, Mr. Purcell, and I I would agree with you. I think that the cleaner thing to do would be to to grant variances because because section, section eight, section eight B, it's not, it doesn't specifically state that that a special permit can be granted. I I agree with you.
And it definitely seems like the intent.
It is.
Was to make it so that, yeah.
Yeah, I have no, I have no question that that is the intent, that the intent is if it's under fifty percent, then the building inspector can grant a a building permit. If it's over fifty percent, they need a special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals. And I've seen numerous numerous zoning bylaws that 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 is the way that it is, but that is exactly what it stated. Here it's not. So so there's sentences missing, I think, but so so so, you know, I I I agree with you. I I agree that it's a it's a tough call. You know, with with regard to, you know, with with regard to the restoration, the the D, the restoration, you know, that that's also tough because you know, it's a nonconforming building or structure which has been damaged or destroyed. You know, we don't have definitions for damage. We don't have definitions for damage, but or destroyed, I'm sorry, but, you know, is lack of maintenance damaged or destroyed? You know, I I think that there, it's it's, you know, because we don't have a definition. So so I I personally didn't even want to go down that road because it's we, it's it's less, there's less, there's less direction in D than there is in B. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Dan.
I have a question for Attorney Quesel. Didn't you address that in the last letter you sent us that because the use changed that that goes away? The the restoration and all that because the use has changed? I thought you addressed that in the last letter.
That was in abandonment. So that's in E.
Oh, okay.
So only abandonment only applies to the use, not the structure.
Okay.
And that's under the statute.
Right. One point about this that's a little bit different than, let's say, Country Club of States is the applicant is going to be building on the lot he doesn't own. So, you know, as a real estate agent, I'm comfortable moving forward to this because nobody's going to pay for real improvements on a property they don't own. So we kind of have like a safety check here that, you know, this is not going to go forward until the applicant buys the property.
Yikes.
Correct?
Absolutely.
Not not one of us would build a would build a house on somebody else's property because they'll own.
Oh, no, 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 no.
So we have a, we have a, we have a kind of a safety valve here in this case.
Yeah. All right. So where do we want to go? What do we want to do? We're at a hundred days right here. We got to either vote on what's before us. What's the pleasure of the board?
So, Mr. Chairman, the the hundred days actually matters. If if you will be granting, if you're going to be granting a variance, then the hundred days matters. If you are, if you are granting a special permit, you have ninety days from the close of the public hearing to issue your decision. So there's a big difference.
Thank you. All right. Well, gentlemen, what do we want to do? What's the pleasure? Pete, come up with something good. I'm hoping you.
Here's the thing. It it it's, it is, it's pretty, it's not going to set a precedent. It's pretty unclear. This is a project that I think the town and will appreciate. And I I'm comfortable, I guess, approving a special permit if if that's what the building inspector thinks that is acceptable and the board thinks is acceptable. I don't know if that's what people want to do. Very, I think the special permit allows him to keep it a nonconformity. I think the variances. I don't know, in both cases, it's kind of.
The only reason, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the board consider the special permit and the variances, and I understand that one may not necessarily coalesce with the other is just for the protection of the applicant, the petitioner, as he goes forward with his construction. He will be seeking financing to put those up. And so sometimes more is better than less. And even if it's surplus, to have the special permit in the variances at the same time, I think it achieves the purposes of the board, the purposes of the applicant. And and I I don't see a harm in it necessarily. Town Council might disagree with me. But I I just don't see a harm. The applicant, it would appear to me is well entitled, I would say, and I use that word with some degree caution because nobody's entitled to anything until unless your board approves these things. But to say that the applicant makes out a good case about the special permit and variances, I guess, is what I want to say.
Amy, would would any other construction on a preexisting, nonconforming grandfathered lot with a structure on it, we just had this a a couple of hearings ago, would they still require variances on the setbacks and whatnot, even if like on a 2,800 or a 3,000 square foot lot, you wanted to put up a house? Even though it's grandfathered, the lot is grandfathered, would you still have to apply for the variances?
No, not, no, not if it's a, not if it's a buildable lot. So not if you're staying, not if you're replacing it, not if there's already a structure there or if it's a buildable lot.
But if you were increasing the nonconformity?
Yeah. If you're, so if it, so so here's, here's another wrinkle in all of this is the fact that this is this is not a single or two-family dwelling. So under 48, section six, a single or two-family dwelling has an added layer of protection where you can increase the nonconformities of a single or two-family nonconforming dwelling upon a finding that it's not more detrimental. However, this is not a single or two-family dwelling. This is a theater right now. So it has to be, it has to be a single or two-family dwelling in existence to then to have that added protection. Here, they're they're changing it to a single or two-family dwelling, but they're not, they don't have that protection right now.
The existing variances that that are on the grandfather lot now, they remain. So if they're building and they're making them smaller, why would they need a different variance? I mean, they're decreasing them, they're not increasing them.
They they're not, they're not doing either. Right now, they're they're building on on the foundation that's there.
It's actually, it's actually, Amy, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's actually less than that. It's it's, it's like 2,300 square feet less than that foundation. So it's inside the foundation.
Entirely.
Entirely.
Setbacks are not changing.
They're improving.
They're improving, evolving.
So every one of the setbacks is is being improved greatly by the new structure being built in place of the old.
Yes. Just to make it clear, that's all.
So they're either, they're either
So maybe that's not an alteration.
Yeah, they're either like changing a nonconformity, or they're building a new building that needs new variances.
Right, right.
It's one or the other.
Exactly. And they they might have just made an argument for building a new building.
Yeah, because from from the jump start, it was, we're building on the same footprint.
Right, that's, that's what my, that's what I understood. If they're not building on the same footprint, then
Now, when you look at, when you look at it, they're actually building a smaller building that was originally there, right?
Yeah, yeah, considerably.
We've been talking about that since the first meeting. It's, everybody's had that plan in front of them. And the variance is that the legal inspector gave us was the inside of the foundation, explaining that. We were, we were, we were making it, all the property better, all the sidelines better, everything was being better than it was.
So, Amy, how does that change things now?
So, I I mean, they're, they're still altering, they're still altering a preexisting, nonconforming structure. However, it all comes down to, it all comes down to how you guys are going to interpret 8B. It's it's more than 50%. And so does that mean they just need a special permit to pre, to alter the preexisting, nonconforming structure that's there right now?
Wouldn't the variance give them more protection than just the proven, yeah, like if 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 we had just a special permit, they're required to stay inside of what was already there. If they have a variance, they can build new stuff with those variances, right?
Variance would be for this particular plan that's in front of us, the exact variance, yes.
And to answer your question, it would provide more protection for them going forward. I think I think most of us, if not all of us, are in agreement that this is a vast improvement of what's there, and would all like to see the applicant be successful, I think. And so the best way to get the applicant from point A here tonight to point B, where they're living in the house months from now, would be to grant the variances. I think the variances, town council says that 8B subject to interpretation. Variances are not, variances are granted or not granted. And if they're granted pursuant to the plan that you have before you, I think we can all conclude at the end of the day that the applicant has the zoning relief that's necessary to move forward.
Yeah. I agree.
I'd be comfortable with that.
Well, Amy, then, under 167 8B, the dimensional variances, if they are not met, a new structure on an undersized lot would would need the variances.
Yes, so they're going to need five variances. They'll need a variance for a structure on an undersized lot, lack, undersized frontage. And then they need side, front, and rear setbacks. I don't know about the height. I'm assuming they'll stay within the height restrictions.
Yes, exactly.
What is the frontage on this lot?
Say that again.
The frontage on the lot? Amy had mentioned the frontage.
The frontage, the frontage on the, that one piece is 129 feet. And total is 200, when they're all combined, is 230 something feet.
I think it's 175 is required.
150.
150, yeah.
It's also a 10,000 square foot lot.
If we give variances, we have to vary the frontage too?
The frontage is what it is. It's 100, it's, it doesn't meet the 150. So yes.
Even on a grant, if it's grandfathered?
They're building a new structure. If they're going to go with variances.
It's the dimensional variances that we spoke of.
And then again, that 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 frontage will change when the two properties are merged.
You cannot, again, again, you cannot, you cannot, I I'm urging this board, and and I put it in writing twice, you cannot look at this as merged. They are not owned by the same owners.
Yeah.
This is one lot. There's only one lot in front of you. That's it. The Board of Health deals with the subject. We don't deal with that.
Okay, so. All right, guys, what are we voting on here? We're voting on on whether or not this is in compliance with with 167 8B, which I feel we should be, I don't know how, the rest of the board, you tell me how you feel. I think we should be looking at the five variances and voting on just that. That's, that's what's in front of us, unless somebody else has a, is a better idea.
I don't, I don't want to be that guy, but the original application had variances for front setback, side setback, and rear setback, and that's it.
So it has to be re-advertised?
No, so, so it's, it's my opinion from the DuToe case that the relief sought can be adjusted by the zoning board, provided that the original notice allowed the public to know what was going to happen. So as long as the public knows that a single-family dwelling will be placed on that, on that lot, that in the general location of where the existing structure is, under the DuToe case, most likely they are fine. However, that is at the applicant's risk. So if there is an appeal that claims that the notice was wrong, that is not on this board, that is on the applicant for agreeing. So it's, it's at the risk of the applicant, not, not us.
That's fun.
We would move forward knowing that risk.
Yeah. All right, then, Amy, what do we have to think for languages in order to be able to vote on this? Do we have, we have to include the undersized lot? The variance on the undersized lot?
So, so if you guys are going to go, if you guys are going to go with the variances, then then I would suggest that someone make a that someone make a motion that the proposed, to grant relief for the proposed dwelling for variances from the, from the lot, from the lot size, required frontage, front setback, rear setback, and side setback. And that the variances be granted because the lot includes the unusual shape and the topography due to the pond. And that that shape and topography create a substantial hardship with regard to placing a structure on that lot to meet the the existing dimensional requirements. And that granting any such variances would, would would not be in derogation of the purpose of the zoning bylaw.
You got that, Pete?
Yeah, I did not write that down.
I hope Arlana got it.
Thank God you are here. Let's start that. Thank you for coming to the meeting tonight.
I guess for the record, I did not get that.
It's recorded, so.
So sorry.
Do you want me to do it again, Arlana, or do you want to?
I mean, Amy, do we need exact numbers for footage, you know, when you say?
It's going to be pursuant to the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, so we should be okay because it's, it's going to be pursuant to the plan on record.
Mr. Whitney, how's that work with you, pursuant to the plan?
Yes, certainly.
It sounds like it makes, all right, Arlana, go ahead, hit it. Put the umbrella drink down. We're all set.
That's why the camera's up.
All right. If Amy wouldn't mind, I'm sorry to ask you again, if you wouldn't mind repeating that.
Sure. So the board is going to, someone, the the motion would be, and then after I say all this, somebody can say, say, move, somebody can say, so moved, okay?
All right, cool.
So the motion would be to grant the proposed dwelling as shown on the plan of record. Note, to to grant five variances for the proposed dwelling as shown on the plan of record. The variances would be for lot, the lot size, minimum frontage, front setback, rear setback, and side setback. The variance would be, is granted due to the fact that the lot size and topography are unusual, particularly with regard to the pond. And that the unusual size, the unusual shape of the lot creates a substantial hardship, meaning that the, a a structure of normal size could not be placed on that lot. And the granting of the variance would not derogate from the intent of the zoning bylaw.
So moved.
I haven't said that any better. And I have a second?
Second.
Okay, does, just so we have, for the record also, is the applicant okay and in in agreement with the aforesaid motion by Mr. Posel?
I think you'll all be, I think you'll all be happy with this when it's all done. And I appreciate all the work that you guys done for me. We're gonna, we're gonna make this happen. Thanks, Amy.
So, Arlana, Arlana, I'll draft something up and send it over to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. This will have to be filed within 14 days of today's the 100th day.
Okay with you, Mr. Whitney? Yep.
They do have an extension till April 25, I believe.
Oh, then never mind. We're fine then.
Okay.
Great.
Charlie, I need to check with you. We had opened up to for discussion, you know, to 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 the public, aside from the
We'll see.
From the board members, but
Looking up and down, I don't see any comments from people wanting to. If one of the Gordons is asking, but I believe they should be speaking to the board directly. So if they want to take their mic and ask the question.
Who, who was that, Charlie? I didn't see.
Well, okay, well, I have a, okay, so Gordon C. Andrews wrote to Amy, a nonconforming structure cannot be abandoned, but the use can be just to clarify. I don't, I
Use is, a use can be abandoned or discontinued. So the, the difference, the difference is that discontinuance, you actually, your, your bylaw doesn't, doesn't actually provide for discontinuance, but a discontinuance is usually two years of non-use. Abandonment can happen at any time. However, abandonment is extremely hard to prove because you have to prove the intent to abandon the use. So if you, the most the the case that always stands out in my mind with regard to abandonment has to do with a nursing home in a residential neighborhood, and the nursing home with, they turned in their license to the Department of Public Health. They said, we're not going to operate a nursing home anymore. And so they turned in their license to the Department of Public Health. Then they changed their mind. The building inspector determined that that was abandoned and that was upheld because the act of turning in their license was the intent to abandon the nonconforming use.
Okay, awesome. Because, well, basically, too, as as far as abandonment went, the 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 building itself was, wasn't abandoned. It was still
So, exactly. We're not talking about a use here at all. The the prior use does not matter right now to this board because the proposed use isn't allowed use in that zoning district. So, so that that's, that actually made things, I I know that this sounds, I know, because it, because it, it was, this was a very complicated matter in front of you guys, but one, one saving grace is that it, it didn't have to do with uses. It only had to do with structures. So because the the preexisting, the preexisting use is being changed to a, to a conforming use.
Well, I heard just Gordon further wrote, but they could have used that building for conforming using use, I assume it is, if it was nonconforming.
So, so that building, the preexisting, nonconforming structure, it it could be switched to a pre, to a conforming use. So, so once it's so, and then, so under F, under 8F of your zoning bylaw, it says that once changed to a conforming use, no structure or land shall be permitted to revert to a nonconforming use. So yes, I would assume that it could have switched to a to a conforming use.
Waiting to see if there's any more texts coming up here. It says, okay, thank you. So Bert, I think you're left with making sure your motion, a second and a roll.
I do have a motion on the floor.
You do have a second. Yeah, you have a second also.
And, oh, I have a second also?
Yeah, and both Bob and Jerry.
Okay. So I have a motion on the floor and second call for a roll call vote regarding petition number 931. I'll call for roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Kasiah?
Yes.
Bob?
Aye.
Pete?
Yes.
Jerry?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Bingo. Cast as unanimous, 5-0 to 0.
On behalf of the applicant, may I thank the board and thank town council for your recent decision. Thank you.
Yes, Amy, thank you so very much. It's well appreciated.
You're welcome, guys.
Thank you very much.
All right, where are we?
One more to go.
One more to go. Petition number 927. Matt Grosschattley, Outback Engineering, Zero Walnut Street, special permit for the horse farm.
I'm good.
Where are we?
Are we done? Are we done, are we done with attorney Quessell?
I think so.
You know how much fun we're having, Amy, let's you want to?
Have a good night.
Well, there he is, right there, Outback Engineering. How are you, sir?
Good, yourself?
Very good. All right, where are we with this?
So we have been before the, the Board of Health. And I, and we submitted a plan to the board for a shared system between the two lots. The board approved the plan, but they're going to hold the permit, the actual permit until we get all the shared system documents, legal documents and the easement plan notarized and recorded. And I believe Alan Diaz from the Board of Health was going to be here, but he had mentioned this also, like I think he emailed you earlier about the board's approval of the plan, but we still have to do some, some legal recording of, of the shared system documents before they'll actually submit their, issue the permit to do the, the septic, shared septic system.
Let me ask him, Mr. Diaz, good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Maybe we'll get this done before breakfast.
Past our bedtime.
Alan, how we doing on this?
Good, good, as Mr. Matt said, I'm not going to ruin his back.
Okay.
After some lengthy discussions and the board did approve a Title V shared system. That's a very complicated process. It's a very cumbersome process. There was a Title V maintenance, operation and maintenance agreement. There was covenants, there's a written easement that has to be recorded that goes along with the shared system. But they've met all of our requirements and guidelines by putting in some additional tanks. The, the existing septic system had the amount of capacity that was good enough for the, the buildings, both buildings usage. So with the advice of town council and the assistance of town council, we do have an agreement that needs to be recorded. And at that point, they'll be reviewed and then disposal works construction permit will be issued.
Are we talking any particular length of time or approximate, Alan?
Well, I would think that the, we probably got a couple of weeks or, or a month before they get the agreements worked out. There's been a couple of changes in Title V. So depending on how they want, if they want to use the existing Title V covenant or if they want to add or delete it. Easements have to be, the easement plan has to be recorded and the rest of the documents have to be recorded. There's a bond that has to be posted with the town or, it's not a bond, but it's a cash agreement that has to be posted. So Matt would have a little better timeframe, but I would think that within the next 30 days, that paperwork should be concluded.
What do you think, Matt?
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to get it done as soon as we can. Just a matter of getting between the town council and our clients, attorneys, getting that paperwork worked out back and forth, but we're trying to push that as fast as we can.
All right.
So we're hoping to have that done in a couple of weeks, you know, optimistically.
So what is the pleasure of the board? I, I don't know if we can, if we can move ahead on this and vote on it contingent upon the permit process being recorded and I, I don't even know if we could do that, to be honest with you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
The, as far as the Board of Health is concerned, we've conditionally approved the, the septic plan. The paperwork is pretty, it's peripheral. I have never done a shared system agreement and this is probably the first time it's been done, one in Halifax, and we probably won't see another one. It, it's my general feeling that the applicants are ready to proceed. They've put a lot of pressure on us to get the process going. I don't know that you'd have to have a, a motion contingent on it. If, if your board is willing to grant them permission to build it, they're not going to get into it or they're not going to get a disposal works construction permit until all the paperwork is completed.
All right, well, that being said, gentlemen, how do we feel?
So I don't think the, the septic system is in our purview for any, some of the previous petitions anyways. So I think we can move forward with it.
What about conditions as far as we spoke of in the previous meetings? This was personal use, or anybody have any conditions or anything that we had made mention about previously?
Personal use, no living quarters?
No living quarters.
Yeah.
Kind of threw me for a loop there when I found there was full, full baths there with showers and laundry facilities. I, I was kind of having a tough time with that. But if it was not being used as a residence, then I'm all good with that. If, unless somebody else has something that they feel, you know, should be set up as a condition. Pete? Or Casaya or Jerry?
I, I think it's, the, the, from the first time they were here, I think the, the abutters spoke very highly of the, the project and seems, you know, consistent with the established character, what they've been doing there in the neighborhood. And they've done a pretty clear, good faith effort to try and, and follow all the processes to get this done. It's even, like Bob said, I don't, I, the, the question of whether we need this answered is open, but I also think it's much more clear that this is happening than some of the other petitions that we've been looking at. So I feel comfortable with the board.
Alana, have you got the actual petition in front of you there? Zero Walnut.
Do I have the petition in front of me?
I have it right here in front of me, I found it. Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals on the application of ADGA Realty LLC for a special permit to construct a horse barn located at Zero Walnut Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by ADGA Realty. As shown on assessment map 98, Lot 1, title reference Book 29865, page 225. The applicant is seeking a special permit to construct approximately 2,964 square foot barn, 78 by 38, including a second floor according to the plans on existing parcels to stable horses for agricultural purposes with a front yard setback of approximately 853 feet, side setbacks of 439 feet and 711 feet and a rear yard setback of approximately 347 feet. This would be in violation of Section 167 12 F4 in the agricultural slash residential district as is greater than 884 square feet in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax. Area is zone petition, is zone residential petition number 927. I just wanted to read it just so what, you know, we've been through mounds and, and valleys here, so at least know what we were voting on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, yes, Matt.
I, I just wanted a clarification on our application, the actual stamp application to the zoning board. We listed the barn at 3,600 square feet.
3,600?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we get the permit issued for the right square footage.
Alana, do you have that on yours?
Hold on, I'm comparing, one second.
Oh, yeah.
In the application for hearing for a variance slash special permit dated October 2nd, it, it does, says the barn will be approximately 3,600 square feet in size.
Yes, that's right.
All right, so on those variances in the, in the permit to construct variances, we, we, we don't condition variances, we can't condition variances. It, it's got to be specified, just instances and whatnot. So we can't put conditions on variances.
I don't think he's asking for any, it's just a special permit.
Well, we were making it a con- condition upon Board of Health approval. We shouldn't be doing that, is what I'm being told. So that's what we're voting on. What's the pleasure of the board?
Whose turn is it?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Jerry, yes.
Petition 927, as presented.
Second.
Contingent upon no, no, uh, no living quarters?
No living quarters, yes.
Personal use also?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, good, I have a motion.
And that's specifically a 3,600 square feet, right? Is that what you asked for?
That, it does say that, Peter, on inside, but you're right, we should.
Just to make sure he's good.
Right.
After all this.
All right, well, I have a motion and a second on the floor to accept petition 927 with conditions. I'm going to call for a roll call vote. All those in favor say aye, Pete?
Yes.
Casaya?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Passes, 5-0 to 0. Matt, I'm sure you don't look very disappointed.
It's been a long road, but patience through this process.
Awesome, Alan, let me just say thank you very much. Really, you guys, the board, we appreciate all your help and your input. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you, and, and get down with me, good night.
Yeah, really. Well, I don't see anything else, what do we have? Special town meeting, oh, that's correspondence. 311, 313, site plan approval from the planning board. Our next meeting with the comprehensive permit for the country club estates. I have seven, petition number 927 PM on May 19th via Zoom. And our next scheduled meeting will be May 3rd for a regular meeting and May 19th for the Country Club 40B project. I don't have anything else, any of you guys have anything else? I think we're all set, how about, I shall entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And do I have a second? I have a motion on the floor and a second to adjourn, are you sure?
Ooh, this is, this is a long one, man, wow.
All those in favor say aye. Pete?
Aye.
Casaya?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And myself, yes, good night, let's do this again real soon.